Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counting down, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Thank you. Welcome to the City Council meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me, oh, it's seven thirty PM, and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to do a roll call considering a request from, for Councilmember Davis to attend the meeting remotely under emergency circumstances of AB two four four nine. Can I get a first and second to approve the request from Councilmember Davis?
I'm moved. Second?
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Can I vote on this?
You can, it doesn't matter.
Yep.
Okay, aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. Can I get a report out from closed session, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the council met in closed session to discuss the status of a potential property sale, gave direction to staff, that was the only action taken. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I believe there was another action taken.
Michael was there at the start because I was delayed. Is he on? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm missing it.
I could speak to it, Tom, if you'd like. The council reviewed a claim and provided direction to staff.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, he covered for me.
That's okay, thank you. So, that moves us to adoption of the agenda. Can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved. Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. And now we will move on to awards and presentations, and we have a presentation from Peninsula Clean Energy and an update from CEO Sean Marshall. Welcome.
Thank you so much. May I ask for the slide deck? Thank you, I know you're working on that. Okay. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm delighted to be with you this evening. My name is Sean Marshall. I'm the new CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy since July of last year. I'm happy to report that my predecessor, Jan Pepper, who I think some of you may know, is very happy in retirement, and it's been a smooth transition since then. Before we get into the content for tonight, and I will keep it brief because I know you've got a packed agenda, I'd first like to acknowledge the contributions of Councilmember Colleen Mackin. She has been an incredible leader for Peninsula Clean Energy. She serves on our board, she serves on our executive committee, and our marketing subcommittee. She is always well-prepared, well-informed, and a strategic advisor to PCE, and we thank you for that, Councilwoman. I'd also like to acknowledge Councilmember Davis for serving as Councilmember Mackin's alternate on our board. The second thing to acknowledge before we get started is, for the first time since PCE launched service in 2016, the issue of affordable rates has outpaced customer concern for the environment. And that is coming through on our customer surveys. It is a ridiculously expensive time, not only for our agency, but also for our customers. We have been listening and we are responding. As the video that we'll watch hopefully is queued up here, we will show this first. The good news is that PCE continues to deliver on the promise of affordable rates and clean energy despite the tough inflationary times we find ourselves in. So we'll watch a quick video, and I'll come back and wrap up with some updates and answer any questions. Thank you, Ingrid.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with the clear goal to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by ninety-four percent while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum five percent below PG&E. That's over a hundred million dollars back to our customers and our community since 2016. In the past year, we have secured our largest wind contract to date, adding over two hundred megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over three hundred megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our hundred percent renewable goal. Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy. We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings.
So with Peninsula Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at twenty-nine outlets installed, and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom-and-pop housing providers, that's really, really important to us because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about four thousand dollars, much less than the average of ten to eighteen thousand dollars in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve.
Okay, thank you so much for watching, appreciate that. So, thank you so much. One more up. So now what I'd like to do, just in the remaining five minutes or so, is take us from kind of the fifty thousand foot level to what we're doing on the ground to deliver direct benefit to our customers and our partner agencies like Brisbane. Next slide, please. So the first one to show is that, as I mentioned earlier, the topic on everybody's mind right now is our utility rates. And to respond to what we're hearing loud and clear from our customers throughout San Mateo County and in the city of Los Banos, we have held, and the board, I should say, made the decision in January to freeze PCE's electric generation rates at twenty-twenty-three levels through at least June and perhaps further into the year. So really effectively, what this means is that now we are anywhere between ten percent and fifteen percent lower than PG&E for electric generation. And this is the first time, and we hope to be able to continue this, in parallel, we're working on a cost-of-service analysis to see if we can provide greater discounts, deeper discounts, for our customers going forward, deeper than the traditional five percent, which is what PCE has offered. I will say on the chart there, on the far, my far right, those are PG&E's delivery rates. We don't have anything to do with those, that is the separate, the separation of services, and you can see that in 2024, those are going up, so all of our customers are going to see an increase in rates, but that is not coming through from PCE. Next up, please. All right, so next up are just a couple of examples of programs that we offer that support homeownership electrification. And one of the most popular programs that we launched just one year ago is our ten thousand dollar zero percent loan program. This is a very simple, one-page application. There are no fees, there's no credit check, and the customer repays it over a period of five years on the utility bill. This program has taken off. In one year, we've issued four hundred loans already. And we also have, as you can see here, a number of other customer rebates to change out old gas appliances. And we are now about to launch a one-stop-shop concierge service for electrification to help customers understand how to do it, how to pay for it, how to stack incentives, and who to work with to actually get this done. Next slide, please. We also, as you saw in the video, are supporting the transition to clean transportation. So through our EV-ready program, we have installed already about a thousand chargers throughout our service territory, and we're in line to install another thirty-five hundred. And those are mostly low-cost or free, depending on the situation. We do have a focus on affordable housing complexes and multifamily housing, where they have trouble very often having those sorts of infrastructure provided for them. So we do have a special focus there. We also have rebates for customers for used EVs and e-bikes. All of these things are very, very popular, and I'm really proud to say that we, PCE has earned a name as a leader in the industry in what we're doing to support EV adoption. So it's been, it's been very gratifying. Next slide. We also partner with our local government member agencies, like the city of Brisbane, to advance community goals in the areas of climate action planning. We fund a county program that provides funding for that. We also have our GovPV program, and you all are very well aware of this one. We put solar on public rooftops. So just recently, Mission Bay, you did a great ribbon cutting for that. And I know that the library is lining up for another project coming up later this year. So that's part of our round two, or phase two. We also have two new funding programs, both loan and grant, for electrification projects, sustainability projects. We've invited your staff to a webinar next Friday, the twenty-third, at ten o'clock in the morning, so to learn more about that. Brisbane right now has an allocation of up to two hundred and five thousand to use in ways that align with our mission and what you want to do locally. So tune in on the twenty-third. Next up. Okay, almost done here. So here are the Brisbane highlights. So you all have just under twenty-five hundred active customers with PCE, the majority of which are residential. You have a ninety-seven percent participation rate, which is fantastic. That means only three percent of your constituents are still bundled customers with PG&E. We share customers with PG&E, but only three percent are entirely with PG&E. The one point seven million dollars saved, that's actually two point one. As of the end of 2023, we just got those numbers earlier today. So that number should update. So this is customer rate savings, which means these are dollars back into the customer's pocket. We've already discussed Mission Blue. We have nine youth climate ambassadors. These are students at your local high schools that can complete a one-year program. They do a climate or sustainability-based project, and at the end of that year, they receive a stipend from us of five hundred and fifty dollars to support their further education. And as mentioned before, you all are in line. It's an application process, but there is an allocation of a little over two hundred thousand for Brisbane for special projects. Going forward, you can follow this link, and we will have updated stats for you on what's happening for the city of Brisbane and PCE. Next slide. All right, so just looking forward to this year. One more, please. Thank you, Ingrid. So just recently, the Board of Directors in December approved a sixty-eight million dollar reinvestment package that will serve our entire service territory. This included a bunch of things, including a three hundred dollar rebate for CareFair customers. Those are customers that participate in a income-qualified programs for energy discounts, typically lower-income population, and they received a rebate right at the holidays, which we received many thank-you notes, and it turned out to be a very good thing to do. We've also allocated money for more building electrification, battery, home battery storage, the one-stop-shop support that our customers need. We are on track to meet our hundred percent renewable energy goal by 2025. This means that our standard product will now be a hundred percent renewable at no extra charge, and in fact, we hope, deeper than five percent discount. We will see how we're doing each year with our budget, and then that will dictate our discounts. And really, oh, and then Caltrain's joining us in the fall. That's another big load that's coming on board. We think that's exciting, and there will be a lot more to say about that. It looks like they will have a hundred percent carbon-free energy to support their load. And we are now really shifting into having the customer at the front and the forefront of everything, every decision that we make, from rates to programs to customer service and everything in between. So with that, one last slide, please. I will just say, from our team to yours, we say thank you for being a trusted partner. We look forward to continuing the good relationship, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from members of our council?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Sean, and welcome aboard. I'm sure it just has to be super exciting to be stepping into these shoes at this time. And yeah, and thank you, Colleen, for, you know, your hard work, you know, on the board, and, you know, it's great to, you know, get that kind of feedback. So yeah, you know, a couple of things. One is, you know, it was great seeing the wind farm and the solar farm. I would think there's got to be a lot of competition out there with, with these alternative energy, you know, agencies. So how does, how does PC, how does PCE, you know, stay, you know, out in front? Yeah, right, and still continuing to, you know, with all that competition, you know, be a leader?
So it's, it's a great question, and one that I've been in this space for a long time, since before PCE had a name. And there was a question that we got a lot. And what I will say is that the proliferation of community choice programs has really opened up the market to a tremendous new kind of cadre of developers and companies that are bringing energy resources into our state. So we issued an RFO recently, I want to say it was sometime last fall, for power services, and we got twenty-one responses. So we have not seen a shortage of reply and available source in the marketplace. What we are experiencing, and all the utilities are experiencing this, the other CCAs are experiencing this, is a delay in when these programs or projects can come online because there's such a backlog of interconnection. And that is a transmission and distribution issue that the CAISO is working on, the big utilities are working on. So we're having to kind of backfill and bridge and plan for some of those delays that we're seeing, which are really market-based delays. But we have no shortage of interest in serving our load.
Yeah, I bet. All right, cool. And then the last question is that, you know, a lot of people, and I would say, including our household, is that, you know, we'd like to do solar, but there's that upfront cost, and you're always kind of figuring out, okay, can I make it pencil out? And, and I heard of this program, I don't know if it's still going on, but I thought it was the city of Berkeley would put up the money to put solar on, you know, people's homes, and that then the, the house would, in a sense, own the solar, not the homeowner.
Stay with the property.
It would stay with the property, and that every year, a certain amount would come out of the person's property taxes, whoever owned the home, to pay the city. Are you, or is PCE thinking of any kind of programs like that to?
I think you're referring to the PACE program, which is Property-Assessed Clean Energy.
Okay.
It was spearheaded by the city of Berkeley several, maybe eight, nine years ago, and it came under fire through Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. I don't have all of those details why, but ultimately, that kind of put a huge freeze on the proliferation of PACE financing. So we have not picked that up. It is, it is still a tool that's around, but it's not widely used because there were a number of sort of hurdles to get through placing the lien on that property. What we do have is, what we are going to redo is our Power on Peninsula program, which basically incentivizes homeowners to install solar plus battery now. Because really, they go together. It's, it's an important thing to have both together. So we're not going to, unfortunately, we can't pay for all of that upfront, but what we can do is incentivize it through rebates and then have some preferred vendors to get out and do the work. PACE is still an option, though, so it would be interesting to look at that and see if there's a potential program for the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Still out there.
All right.
Thank you. Any other?
Just thank you, Sean, that was great.
Sure.
And I won't forget that we have someone on remote, but go ahead, please, Colleen.
Oh, do you want to?
No, no, go ahead.
I'll try not to do my gushing about PCE, but I did want to thank you, Sean, for coming here. And by way of a little intro, Sean brings a very, very impressive background and credentials to what we call CCAs, which are community choice aggregates, AKA clean energy companies. Sean was on the cutting edge of that. You worked for Marin Clean Energy. You were the COO of Clean, or of PCE before you became our CFO, our, our CEO. And I just want to say that in terms of leadership, you are so dynamic with this organization. And PCE has almost doubled in a couple of years. And what the organization is doing for all of these customers, we are so fortunate to have this in San Mateo County. It's, it's literally a model for the rest of the country. I know you mentioned that, but I don't know if people realize how stunning that recognition is, where people are coming to her and saying, "How do you do this? How do you do it financially and make it work?" And just attributed to the number of HVAC units and heat pump water heaters in the county has been just, it's, it's so astronomical and impressive. And there's so many more things. Councilmember Lentz, where you talked about programs, there's a lot of new programs people will want to investigate about PCE rebates and funding on bill pay as well.
Exactly.
Having five years to pay things off is huge. So you are so dynamic, and I'm expecting huge things because I'm seeing it, and, and I'm so thrilled to be able to participate in it. It's a very exciting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. I will say that when other states call to say, "Hey, what's going on?" And Peninsula Clean Energy is usually one of the top two that is held up as a model program to emulate in other parts of the country, and it's not easy to do. So I love the agency, and I'm honored to be the CEO. Thank you for having me. Any other questions?
No, thank you, but Madison, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Have a lovely evening. Take care.
So that's going to bring us to Item C, a presentation from Rebuilding Together Peninsula. And today, we have Robert Skelton here to share some information with us.
I'm here. Hello, Madam Mayor, hello, city of Brisbane. Happy to be here. Exciting to, to, I'm always happy to chat about who we are and what we do. But I know we're on limited time, so I'm going to test Ingrid's finger speed and whip through a quick little presentation, talk about who we are. That's the intro. Next slide. So this is just, real quickly, we'll talk about just the challenge that we're all familiar with regarding affordable housing and the cost of living in a home in the Bay Area and San Mateo County and the Peninsula. Talk about who we are and the impact that we can have on homeowners in San Mateo County, and how you can help. Next slide. So the, these stats are not unfamiliar to you. The, I just read recently that the average San Mateo County household income is about a hundred and forty-nine thousand. But the average household income of the homeowners that we serve with the work that we do is fifty thousand a year. And I think all of us can appreciate that if a household, which may have many adults in them, is only making fifty thousand, that's a real impact and a real hardship on how to, how to put food on the table, pay your medical bills, let alone address home repairs that you may have in your house. And that's where we come in. So next slide? Next slide? So we've been around since nineteen eighty-nine. Rebuilding Together is a national network, and we are one of over a hundred affiliates across the country. We're actually, with our budget and our size of region and the number of projects that we do every year, we're one of the largest affiliates in the country. And throughout the year, we have technicians on staff that are in somebody's home doing grabbar installations, wheelchair ramps, swapping out of faulty appliance, making sure the windows are insulated, making sure that everybody lives in a safe and healthy home. We also do larger repairs, like roof repairs and flooring. We swap out kitchen remodels. We do that with vendors and contractors that we have in our trusted network. And then next slide? And next slide? And then on special rebuilding days, we have National Rebuilding Day coming up at the end of April, and we have a Fall Rebuilding Day in the middle of October. We work with sponsoring organizations who provide us with funds and also volunteer teams to do larger work. So there are many homes that have a fence that's falling down, that a backyard is overgrown, that it's a safety hazard. They want to get rid of their lawn that they can't take care of anymore, and they want to hardscape it. They need a fresh coat of paint because the paint is peeling and, and needs to be replaced and redone, and they can't afford that. So we, we trust volunteer teams from our sponsors to come in and tackle those larger projects. We also have a lot of contracting firms that sponsor us as well, and we, we call them the home runs because we can give them the keys to a house and say, "Let us know when you're done." Here's a list of what, what needs to be done. Kitchen remodel, roof repair, flooring repair, and the generosity of various firms enable us to perform different levels of work at each site. We'll also do community revitalization through our facility program, where not only homes on these rebuilding days, but we'll also work on preschools and shelters and daycares, nonprofit agencies that service a low-income population as well. And now that I mentioned low income, to preempt a question that you may have, all of our clients are low-income qualified according to San Mateo County guidelines. We also do a little bit of work in Santa Clara County, down to Mountain View. So we follow the Santa Clara County guidelines for low-income qualification as well. Next slide. So since nineteen eighty-nine, we've been in over three thousand homes. We've worked with over ninety thousand volunteers. Single rebuilding day the last couple of years has meant seven hundred volunteers, but in the last thirty-five years, we've had, we've had years where we've had a thousand volunteers. last 35 years, we've had, we've had years where we've had 1,000 volunteers. And our impact survey post our work gives us the indication that 95% of homeowners report that they feel safer and live more comfortably in their home. And that's really the heart of what we do nationwide and in San Mateo County, because everyone deserves to live in a safe and healthy home. Next slide. Next. So how to help? So we have two major funding programs. One is sponsorship. An organization, whether it's a civic organization or a corporate organization, a service organization wants to sponsor our work, they sponsor our rebuilding days. Your money goes into a pot to sponsor rebuilding day across all of our rebuilding projects. This April, we will probably have about 25 projects across the county. We work the entire county. We're in Pacifica, we're down to East Palo Alto, we do Half Moon Bay and Pescadero when those applications come in. And again, we also work a little bit down into Santa Clara County when those applications and, and the contract years are live. Along with that sponsorship comes the opportunity to provide a volunteer team. So organizations that provide sponsorship at our qualifying levels also provide a volunteer team to do some of those larger projects, like painting and fence repair, possibly alongside skilled contracting work. The volunteer experience has always been something very impactful that our participants say, because the homeowner's there, the homeowner is buying them breakfast, cooking them lunch, expressing gratitude. They're learning, the volunteers are learning repair skills and finding hidden talents that they may not have realized that they had before. The other funding is grants. We work with the county, we work with all the various city jurisdictions on receiving grants, usually Measure K and CDBG funds. And the grants can take many different forms. So it's either a grant that we receive via reimbursement upon receipt submission. So you give us X amount of dollars, and we give you receipts totaling up to X amount of dollars, and you give us the reimbursement. Or you give us a grant in full, in advance, and we perhaps provide you proof of work, documentation at the conclusion of the work. Next slide. That's it. Thank you very much. That's our story. You know, just the impact that we work. We have homeowners, and I wish, you know, PCE did a great job with, with including a video in their presentation. And soon as they click on that, I was like, I should have put my video in that presentation. But it's a six-minute-long presentation, and we would have cut into my allotted time that Ingrid was very insistent on. But in that presentation, we have, we have a couple of testimonials from homeowners on the impact that it makes. We have, we have Eddie, who is a homeowner in Redwood City, who, who was a veteran, and he's confined to a wheelchair. And he was a little bit grumpy and a little bit grouchy and applied. His family encouraged him to apply for service, and he accepted the work and agreed to the work that was going to be done, including a wheelchair ramp to be built. But during the service, the service day, he was a little bit grumpy about it. And our team, this was before my time, but I've heard the legendary story of our team working with him and talking to him and him seeing the volunteers at work and, and, you know, just come say hello, just come say hello. And it turns, turned into a video-worthy moment, where he's in tears and talking about the life-changing event that a wheelchair ramp now has provided him, because he has consistently seen the park across the street. And now he can get out of the house and he can go to the park. And the volunteers are in tears, the homeowner's in tears, our staff is in tears, and that's the impact that we can have. We talk about our mission is repairing homes, revitalizing communities, and in the process, we're rebuilding lives. And Eddie's story is really just an example of how we can rebuild a life. And I'll tell you, my own, my own parents, they're in their 80s, and I go to their home in Mountain View, and, Dad, there's a crack in the step, you're having difficulty walking down these stairs, you should have a railing on here. That's all right, I don't need those stairs. I just, I go where, I go the long way around, through the, through, through the dining room out to the patio, so I don't use those stairs at all. Well, what if you had a railing? Then you could use those stairs. So that's what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Well, you know, Mabston and I, we had a meeting with, with Robert, and it was excellent. And that's why, you know, Robert's here today, you know, to, to give this presentation to the full council, and then really to the community as a whole. I mean, what Rebuilding Together does is fantastic. And so what, what we were hoping was that, you know, the council would be inspired to place on a future agenda, and hopefully soon, because Rebuilding Together's rebuilding day is, is towards the end of April, you know, maybe looking at our affordable housing funds that we have. Because, you know, what Rebuilding Together does, you know, or one of the things that they do is they keep low-income folks who own their homes staying in Brisbane. And, and we definitely have some folks that we want to help out. And so, you know, granted, this is just a presentation, but, you know, hopefully, you know, we can put this on a, you know, maybe our next agenda so that we can have a good discussion about it.
And we, we, you used the key words, affordable housing. The, the two effects that we like to talk about is preserving affordable homeownership, because the work that we do takes the cost of repairs off the, off the concern of homeowners so they can focus on, on paying their medical bills and paying for food and paying whatever else they need to pay for, so they don't have to worry about safe and healthy housing, critical repairs. And the other thing is that we maintain the diverse fabric of each community, because many of our homeowners are seniors who are on fixed income, they're veterans, maybe with medical issues, and so they can't work. And they're historically marginalized communities that typically have depressed incomes. So by enabling them to stay in a safe and healthy home, they're able to remain members of the community and continue contributing and thriving as our neighbors.
Great, thank you. Colleen?
I have one very quick question. Thank you for the presentation, and what you do is really so important, keeping people in their homes.
Thank you.
A lot of people are very reluctant to ask for help, especially people get older, and sometimes they're just like, no, no, it's fine, you could tell your dad, maybe you need to call and see if you can get help on your step or this or that, and they, they just don't follow through, they feel overwhelmed. Is it possible for neighbors, relatives to contact you on behalf of them? Do you have the ability to do an outreach then to that, that relative or neighbor?
Absolutely. To win in the best of times, when we're optimally staffed, we're a scrappy nonprofit, but when we're optimally staffed, we have an increasing outreach effort. Your office has, has included our message in your monthly newsletter and your email outreach. We try to do that with the various jurisdictions. We're tabling at senior events and at community centers and at events and fairs to get the word out. We rely very heavily on word of mouth. There are blocks where we've done work in Bell Haven in Menlo Park and in Ravenswood and in East Palo Alto. There are many neighbors who just keep referring us, and so that is, that is a, a key source of outreach for us. And yes, absolutely, on our website, there is an application information on our website. So we, we are happy to receive phone calls from family members and neighbors. We have one gentleman in Millbrae whose neighbors wanted to work on their fence, but they couldn't until he fixed his fence and he fixed his yard. And so they, they recommended that he apply for our service, and we came and, and we received that application, and we, we looked at his house, and boy, did he need some work on his yard and his fence. So, yes.
Great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Madison, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, I think it's also important to note that we have an applicant from Brisbane currently.
Yeah, and Brisbane is typically a jurisdiction that, that we are unfamiliar with. You know, we get a lot, Daly City and South City, East Palo Alto, Redwood City, and, and when we get grants and those CDBG funds from various jurisdictions, you know, that's kind of where our attention goes. So the city of San Mateo gives us grant money and CDBG money, like, all right, let's find some homes in, in San Mateo. But again, we're open to the entire county. We do have a current applicant who's been approved for service in Brisbane. It's a little bit of unusual house, on a hill and a staircase that goes up the hill, and how are we going to get people up there? That's a little bit of a headache. But yeah, that homeowner has some needs that we've recognized, that we've visited, we saw, and we're like, whether it's vendored out to have some skilled contractors come in, or maybe some volunteers come in to help, we will address that homeowner.
Well, thank you very much for coming and, and speaking to us and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. RTPeninsula.org, and Councilmember Lentz has, has my information directly to, to follow up with any questions.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Robert.
Okay, we are going to move on to oral communications, number one. And this is the time for members of the public wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. And I have one slip from Glenn Feldman, if you'd like to. Come up.
Good evening, councilmembers. The environmental crisis, although it's kind of out of the headlines, is accelerating. Scientists tell us that we are reaching multiple tipping points and that it is happening very fast. The best evidence of that is probably the species extinctions, which are also accelerating. A lot of species that are hanging on by their fingernails, their populations, even if they're not extinct yet, have reduced to the point that they're not fulfilling their role in our ecosystems. At the same time, we have a Congress that is completely gridlocked and not doing a thing. So there's very little hope for federal action on many of our environmental problems for the near future. We also have a Supreme Court, which threw a decision last year and one that is expected this year, is on track to cripple the role of the EPA and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in carrying out the environmental laws of the United States. And what that means is really that the onus for mitigating harm and trying to adapt to it is really on sub-national levels of government. That means states, it means counties, and it means cities like Brisbane. We're really fortunate, I'm very grateful, that we have a council that understands this, and we have a city manager, an outgoing city manager that understands this. I'm here to spend my couple of minutes asking the council, because you're in the process of hiring a new city manager, to foreground, to, to put environmental issues and sustain, and the city's commitment to sustainability at the forefront. When you interview candidates, as I understand you're going to be doing in the next few weeks, and that after a city manager is hired, that you supervise that person and continually reiterate the importance of doing absolutely everything that we can to protect our local environment and to contribute as much as we can to protecting the bigger environment. It's, it's just so important. And that's all I really wanted to say, in view of the hiring decision that you're soon going to be making, that you, you put that front and center when you ask questions, and when you supervise that person in his or her day-to-day activities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn. I second that.
So is there anyone else who would like to speak on oral communications, number one? Do we have anyone online?
Madam Mayor, I see no more hands raised.
Thank you. So that will move us to the consent calendar. I did have a request from Councilmember Mackin to remove Item F for a brief question. So I'd be asking if I can get a first and a second to approve Items D and E.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. And that would bring us to Item F, to acknowledge that North County Fire Authority completed required annual mandated fire and life safety inspections within the city of Brisbane for 2023. And Councilmember Mackin, would you like a staff report, or do you just have a question?
I don't know if we have a representative from North County Fire here, so I can make it also a statement. The inspection included hotels, motels, schools, public, private facilities, apartment houses, residential care. And under lodging house, I would just like to be emphatic that we do have short-term rental permit holders, and those are situations that I think also absolutely must be monitored and inspected. If that was not done, I would just try to emphasize in the future that we make sure that's taken care of as well. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, would you make a motion to approve Item F?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. And I, I'm going to backtrack here just for a second and ask, because we removed it from consent, City Attorney, would we need to open this up for public comment on the chance there's someone here?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So maybe a little bit late, I'm going to open this Item F up for public comment. Are there any members in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, is there any members of the public online that would like to speak on this?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess that, would we need to revote on this, City Attorney?
You do have to have a vote on it. It's not been voted on.
No, we did vote on it.
I take the new vote because you didn't have public comment. That's what I meant. Go ahead.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please? We already had a first and a second.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were doing it the right way. It's been a while. Okay. Old business. It brings us to Item G, Brisbane Rental Assistance Program Eligibility Requirements. And then we will have a staff report to start us off.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Before you, as a request to revise the eligibility requirements for the city of Brisbane's Rental Assistance Program. As you're well aware, this program was set up in December of 2020 at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic to address the concerns of Brisbane residents who were being impacted directly by COVID and not being able to meet their rental obligations. Since we've come out of the pandemic, the Community Resource Center, the YMCA Community Resource Center, has approached us to see if those eligibility requirements can be revised as they're hearing from more clients that are not directly being impacted by COVID itself, but they're still being financially impacted by the economy and what COVID, COVID has done to that and just the general financial hardships. The YMCA Community Resource Center is headed up by Alida Salavado Ramirez, who's available on Zoom as well. But they serve Brisbane as our core service agency, as well as the areas of San Bruno and South San Francisco. And the eligibility requirements, therefore, to be able to meet the needs of more Brisbane residents, would, would retain that they would live in Brisbane, that they would have an income at 80% or lower of the area median income. And I must say that in the staff report, I had listed that as being $175,000, but as we heard from Robert Skelton from Rebuilding Together, that that amounted for the 80% of the AMI is actually $149,000. So I wanted to make that clear, that it's lower than the $175,000 that was in the staff report, so it'd be available to more households, actually, would be able to meet that requirement. And that's for a family of four. Another eligibility requirement that would remain is that they're not related to the landlord, that they have a signed rental agreement, and that- that they have a signed rental agreement and that their savings do not cover their past due rent. On January 29th, the city's Economic Development Subcommittee met with staff and were in agreement to revise the eligibility requirements. Wanted to bring it to the full council so that the council could agree to do that revision before the funds were, the remaining funds of $49,895.66 could be distributed fairly. So with that, I can take any questions. And as I mentioned, Alida is on the Zoom as well.
Have a comment?
Sure.
So part of the reason that we made the recommendation is we realized that, yes, COVID is largely beyond us as a crisis throughout our community, but we're seeing other kinds of crises come very hard on the heels of COVID. For example, the insurance, the PG&E true-up fees, and on and on it goes. And those kind of amounts, having somebody have a 30% to 1,000% increase in their homeowner's insurance, people can't just pluck that money out. So we were assuming that there were quite a few people in our community who are possibly in dire straits. And so we thought this was a good way to address that.
I think we're still on questions for staff. That's okay. But
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Robert Davis has had her hands up. I don't. Sorry.
Okay. I'm not seeing that on my screen, but please go ahead, Madison.
I just have a question for staff. I'm curious why this would have gone to economic development and not affordable housing? Because this is a housing-related, appears to be affordable housing-related issue.
I think it certainly, in terms of the recommendation, ended up in that arena. This had been handled by the Economic Development Subcommittee when COVID started back in 2020. And so just for the consistency of the issue, we just kind of kept it going through that Subcommittee. But obviously, the recommendation ultimately ended up coming more back towards a housing program. We had originally been talking about the Business Assistance Program and some other things. So that's the reason it ended up where it ended up.
Okay, good, thanks for clarifying.
Colleen.
Thank you. This question, either staff or the Director of the YMCA Community Resource Center, given that this sounds like limited amount of funds and given the impending need, is there a formula so that we don't end up with a lot of money going to one person who has a great need and then other people being left out? Is there a distribution methodology?
Thank you, answer. And apologies, that wasn't detailed in the staff report, but the grant amount is $4,000 maximum per household.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I don't have any questions for staff.
Okay. So if we have a $4,000 per household and in the staff report it says that one resident of Brisbane got $13,000 from this fund, how is that?
Yes, this came up during the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting as well. And I will say that it was during the time of the winter storms, when the resident's home was red-tagged and she was, had a dire situation there. And she was in a long-term rental. We did contact, I did contact the YMCA Community Resource Center to see if there was any assistance that we could provide with her situation or for her situation. And so I admit that there was a requirement of, or a max requirement of $4,000 per household. And so I will say that that's my fault for having that be exceeding that $4,000 amount. But it was to meet that need. And I think that was the intent of the council when the fund was originally created to provide that relief to a household that was in a dire strait. And that was definitely a situation.
Okay, and was that a rental assistance or was that a homeowner?
She was a homeowner, but she had moved into a rental down the street from her home. So she was greatly, I talked to her after, and she was very not wanting to be helped, but we met with her.
We don't need to go into the specifics of that.
She was very relieved.
It was just my questioning of the process. And then what Councilmember Cunningham stated about fire insurance costs going up, I don't think this as rental insurance would be something that would be able to be put to use of excess fire insurance.
I'm not sure that we talked about how the money could be used. It was just, we've got these other situations in the community that are dire right now, and we still have this money. So it was just a suggestion to bring it back to council and discuss that, that, you know,
Okay, well.
for people in financial need for whatever current reason. That was correct?
Well, I think that if we were going to do something like that, one would assume we'd want to change this because you're just talking about changing some of the criteria to remove COVID-19 as the instigus of a program and adding it to be not just rental assistance, but homeowner's assistance. And I think that's fundamentally changing the program, you know, to a great extent. And I don't think that's even noted in this staff report. So if that's something we're looking at, I mean, I'm certainly amenable to removing the COVID-19 link to assistance through this fund so that it can be broader applied. But I don't think we need, we would want to, at least with this staff report and the information that's gone out to the public, be able to change this program completely to a residential or a housing assistance program for homeowners and/or renters without it certainly getting more scrutiny than what it is here.
Yeah, are we doing council discussion or?
I think we are in council discussion, yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Or are we?
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah, maybe the public team might want to ask some questions.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to define the parameters of what this is doing.
I totally agree with you.
So
I just want to make sure.
Go ahead, Madison. I'm sorry, I don't see when you're raising your hand. There's no way for me to do that.
Jump in. So just to confirm, the money that's in this fund came from federal government, right? When we got like, that's how we had money to do business, like relief for businesses impacted with COVID. We put a certain amount, like $200,000 in that fund, and then we put $100,000 in this fund. So just to confirm, this is where that money originally came from, right?
This is $100,000 from the low mod housing fund.
Oh, so we put it from the low mod. So then where do we get the $200,000 then from the small business grant program?
Those were ARPA funds, which is funds received from the federal government for COVID-specific relief.
Okay, so none of those ARPA funds went into this fund? Because I thought that, because that's why it's COVID-specific.
That is correct. It did not go to this program.
Got it, okay.
Are we sure? Because we're having a little discussion over there as a sidebar. Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Great. Okay, now I guess we can just Oh, okay, Michelle Salmon.
I'm sorry, it's really not clear. I should have read the staff report, I guess. But it's really not clear what this is all really about, at least sitting here listening to you guys. So is there any clarity you can provide of whether it's rental, housing, I mean, rental homeowner, COVID-related, other-related? Where'd the $100,000 come from? What's low mod, et cetera? Just a little bit more clarity.
Thank you. So we'll close public here comments and we'll get back to discussion.
Councilmember Lentz was starting.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So yeah, so Karen and I, we had our Subcommittee meeting. And we did talk about looking at other things, like the insurance. And, but I think we both agreed that we would focus on what was already established by the council and that we would look at removing the COVID issues so that this program could be more attractive to other folks. And then seeing if the council was open to perhaps agendizing, looking at other types of relief, right? So separate, right? But focused on what is before us today. So we were both in favor of moving forward with, you know, just getting more people connected to this program that could use it. So reducing those COVID restrictions.
Okay, because that's, again, it's not clear from this. You know, certainly, we this is rental assistance program.
Yeah, and that's what, yeah.
And, you know, to bring something and say, oh, well, we also wanted to talk about something else under the same umbrella really isn't isn't a good way to do it. If we need to bring that back, that'd be a separate discussion.
Exactly, a separate discussion.
And, you know, we would have to figure out when we could do that and how we might even fund it.
Exactly.
And that's something that's a totally different item. Colleen, do you have?
Yes, I would just point out that eligibility criteria, this language could be tightened up a little bit because it's alluded to, these are for renters only, not related to a landlord, signed rental agreement, cover past due rent. So that, to me, says you're excluding homeowners. And I think it would just be easier, the eligibility criteria from the very beginning, live in Brisbane and are a renter. Just be very specific what the criteria are. And if it was a situation where council chose to expand it, then I think we need to bring this back with some different wording.
Yeah, I would be happy to remove the COVID-19 impacts. And, but I'm not really seeing what the changes would be.
Madam Mayor, one other point is it's really not clear what these funds can be used for. Are we putting certain earmarks on, is it just to cover rent? Or is it to cover if someone barely is paying their rent, but they have a huge medical bill? And so that's creating a financial hardship? I think either we leave that up to the people who are administering the program or we put that language in here.
I have a question for staff. When somebody gets the funds for this program, is the city writing the check directly to the landlord?
The check is going from Samaritan House. Maybe Alida can jump in here. The city is not issuing the check, but it's coming from Samaritan.
Is it going to the landlord or is it going to the tenant?
Alida here from the YMCA, thank you for your time. The check is going directly to the landlord. So as a core agency, we're core partners with Samaritan House, another nonprofit. And so they are the fiscal administrators. We administer the actual assessments, evaluations, and work with the clients directly and assess and submit the applications to Samaritan House's financial department so that the checks can be cut. And those checks go directly to the landlord. And yes, the hope here is to remove the specifically COVID-19 restrictions so that it can be expanded to the needs of folks that are just, you know, trying to kind of find, repair from the impacts of COVID potentially or just regular hardships, like financial hardships that they're experiencing.
So is it just to cover past due rent? Or, because let's say someone's rent is $2,000 a month, right? So can they get the max amount of $4,000? Or is it just to cover one month's rent or whatever they, whatever they owe that's unpaid?
We have done whatever is delinquent. And what we've done with the other core funding that we administer, we've never gone past one month in the future. And it's only and always because there is a specific financial hardship that has caused them to either fall behind or they know that they will be unable to pay for that immediate month that's upcoming. But always to the maximum of the funding source.
So can they apply twice? So let's say that there is another month that they experience where this issue is ongoing.
We haven't experienced that need yet. And so happy actually to receive clarity on how you would like us to proceed with that specific requirement.
Am I amenable to removing the COVID-19 restriction? I feel like, you know, there was $100,000 put in. There's still basically about half the fund left. And the YMCA already has contacts with several people who've benefited from the program. I don't see why, if the money is going directly to the landlord, why they couldn't receive the maximum if, for example, they, you know, were out of work for more than two months and needed to, you know, have some assistance. So I think this really serves our most vulnerable populations. Renters, in my opinion, are some of our most vulnerable populations. And I would like to see, I mean, we made this fund probably in 2020. It's been four years almost, maybe a little bit less. And I would like to see this money not languish in this account, but actually go to people that need it. But I wouldn't be amenable to I wouldn't be amenable to looking at revising the program substantially to include other demographics other than what's mentioned here.
You know, I got a question for you, Madison. You know, like in what you're, in your questions to the representative from YMCA. So there's that amount, you know, not to exceed the amount of the rent, you know, per month. So and maybe, I'm sorry, I don't see your name on our screen, the representative from YMCA. But so in regards to what Madison was talking about, the rent is $2,000 per month and there's $4,000 that someone can receive. Maybe they don't owe anything at the present moment, they're able to still be current, Alida. Maybe they're still able to be current, but yeah, it might last a couple of months, you know, until they find another job or whatever. So does that money, like $4,000 goes to the landlord? Or would you, you know, send $2,000 one month? And if that tenant couldn't pay for the next month, then you would then send another $2,000? I'm just, yeah, if you could just provide some kind of clarity, how you would manage that?
Yeah, absolutely. For other funding sources that we manage, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head how this, if it's happened for the handful of Brisbane clients yet. But it's very common that what we do is, let's say, a tenant is behind with February rent currently. So that's the month that they're behind on, but they need a little bit more time as a buffer to, you know, for that first paycheck to come from their next job. So then we will automatically, as long as it's under the funding's allowed maximums, will automatically just send the full maximum or whatever the cost would be for those two months of rent to the landlord at one time. And the landlord just pays it towards the upcoming month. And the tenant doesn't have to worry about it.
Okay, great. And the thing is that we Okay, great. And, and, and the thing is that we, all the recipients of this, of these funds are low income people. So they're probably living paycheck to paycheck anyways. So any kind of assistance, I think, would be greatly appreciated. All right. And then just, just one last question. You know, it says, you know, that you have to have a signed rental agreement. Maybe Caroline, um, do, do you feel like this, that, that pretty much clearly states that this person is renting? That it's only for someone who is renting, not for a homeowner? It's, it's only people who are in the rental market?
Yes. And when we advertise this program again, we always call it the Brisbane Rental Assistance Program. And we have a graphic and everything that we use to advertise, so it'll be clear.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. So.
Okay. So right now on the, on the staff report, we have the eligibility requirements. And we're thinking of removing that he, they were current as of March 16th, 2020 on rent. We're going to remove, they've accumulated past due rent. We're going to be removing, not receiving other COVID-19 rental assistance. We're going to be removing savings not available to cover past due rent. So it's rent moving forward to keep them in the home.
The savings on past due rent is on the new eligibility on the second sheet. It does appear on the second sheet.
The next bullet showing impact of COVID-19 on income.
No, it says, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, you're talking over, what's that?
The following bullet on, um, page one, the very last one showing impact of COVID-19 on income. That one will be the fourth one that will be removed.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's saying not available to cover past due rent. So we're not paying their back rent. We're paying their forward rent so that they don't get evicted.
Correct.
And we're removing the show impact of COVID-19 on income. And are we removing the notification of job loss terminate, termination?
I think those are all under the, uh, this show impact of COVID-19 on income. I think they're all related.
Okay, so we're going to remove all those.
Yeah.
But we will still, I think, require, I, I would like to see an affidavit that names the household members. Is, is, is that required in the application per the YMCA? That it name lists the names of the household members? Alita?
Yes, it is. Names of household members and date of birth, um, specifically for everyone in the household as part of the application.
Okay. Okay, with that, is there any more discussion?
No.
Is everybody, oh, yes, go ahead.
So removing notification of job loss termination during pandemic. I would just ask, uh, uh, Alita, when you screen applicants, do you ask them about job loss termination? Because that is relevant to screening. So I would just take out during pandemic. It, it's relevant to screening whether someone is qualifying.
Agreed. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with that. And that's how we function with all of our, uh, funding sources for rental assistance. We have to screen that there are some sort of financial hardship, whether it's due to job loss or injury, something of the sort. There has to be a, a critical need and hardship and also some sort of, um, a, a plan towards ability to, to maintain future rent on their own is how we function with other funding sources. But I know, um, flexibilities can be made on the plan of sustainability if needed.
So if we had in addition saying something to the effect of notification of job loss termination or extreme financial hardship due to circumstances, just something, I, I think that, that's still a valid criteria.
Yeah, I, I think that they're going to have to show their, the reasoning anyway, no matter what kind of application they fill out for this. I don't think we need to build it into the application process necessarily.
Okay.
I think it's, it's with intent that that's done, you know, when someone's applying for hardship.
Yes.
Funding. If you're more comfortable with language being in there, I'm sure that, uh, the YMCA and their funding source can, their funding partners can make sure that happens. So we are going to vote on a motion to change the eligibility criteria for the Brisbane Rental Assistance Program. Is that?
That, yes, yeah, I would make that motion to make the changes.
Thank you, Cliff. And do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, so it was a first, uh, councilmember Lentz and second by councilmember Cunningham. And then a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. Moves us to new business. To authorize the city manager to sign funding agreement for construction phase of the Smart Corridor project. And a staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Breton, councilmembers, good evening. This is an anticipated phase of a continuation as we attempt to fill out the intelligent transportation system throughout San Mateo County. You'll recall that back in September, you approved a funding agreement to install the fiber optic black fiber itself and the conduit in Bay Shore Boulevard. And if you've noticed the construction activity out on Bay Shore between San Bruno and Valley, that's been ongoing for the last couple of weeks now. One of the items that the council had, uh, a number of concerns about for this phase where we come in and we're actually installing the changeable message signs, we're installing the CCTVs, we're installing the connection here at City Hall so the city can control it, was the size and placement of the changeable message signs. So we have staff from CCAG here this evening. They're happy to do a quick presentation for you just to recommit that they heard you, that they've downsized the signs. Uh, and I believe they even have a, a two slide PowerPoint. They could just show you that and convert that to you. So I'd like to invite Mr. Sean Sharptier, the executive director of CCAG up there. And while Sean's making his way to the mic, I just want to point out one thing. I believe at the last meeting, a speaker made the statement that these signs are going to be on all the time. And that is a mistake. These signs will only be on when they are energized either by Caltrans because there's been a major incident on the freeway system and they have to divert vehicles and they will be coming through our community or at the city's discretion. So for instance, the city could decide to say on some of the message signs that are closest to Old County, Old County road closed for this day for day in the park. We could choose to do that, but it's our decision. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sharptier.
Thank you, Sean. Welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Uh, Sean Sharptier, executive director at CCAG. And with me tonight is also Kaki Chung, deputy director at CCAG, and Audrey Shirimizu, who's been managing this project for us at CCAG. And we also have the consultant who's available online if there are additional questions. Uh, we are excited to be here to support the staff recommendation to enter into a funding agreement for the civil service portion, civil, uh, engineering portion of this project. Uh, just as a quick recap, the Smart Corridor project is a countywide effort to integrate technology into how we travel. Growth is occurring, traffic's occurring, and we're running out of abilities to build our way out of it. So we have to manage it more intelligently. And one of the ways we do that with, is with ITS or Smart Corridor, which helps us use real time information to direct traffic flows. Here in Brisbane, it's one of the, the last components of the Smart Corridor project. Uh, consists of a 3.4 mile long fiber optic cable that runs the length of the city. It has nine new signals, 11 new, um, new cameras and six changeable message signs or CMS signs. And, uh, we were here in September and, uh, discussing this project with the council. And we heard that the signs, that there were concerns about the illumination of the signs and the impact that would have on the community and the town feel. So what we did is we changed the design of the signs, as we mentioned at that meeting. There are six signs. They were eight by five. Now they are, uh, five by four. So overall, it's a, an almost 50% reduction in surface area. And we do have those reduced sizes are reflected in the design documents. And we wanted to return tonight and to support, uh, the staff recommendation and also let you know that, uh, the CCAG Board of Directors approved, uh, entering into the funding agreement for this phase, uh, at the Thursday meeting last week. And, uh, we're excited to be here and thank you for your support. And we're available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Um, did you say we had slides?
We do have two slides.
We sure did. If the clerk could pull us up, please?
Uh, they are slides of the signs and they're just to illustrate the, the reduction. And they, they are a reflection of the reduced sign sizes that are in the, uh, design documents. Uh, so the top is the prior size and then the lower one is the, the reduced size. And we wanted to present these tonight. So there is sort of a tangible administrative record.
I'm not seeing what you're trying to show us.
Oh, uh, so this is the updated dimension of the CMS sign, which is on the right side where it says trail blazer display.
Okay.
We changed those to five by four signs.
And the sign was the size of the other outline?
Uh, you could scroll up to the next slide. And that shows the original sign size of, uh, seven by 11.
Okay, but you don't have anything that shows what it looked like in real world?
Uh, how it would look in the field. With us tonight? No, I think we presented, do we have slides from the last presentation? How would we get those to?
That's okay, that's okay. I just would appreciate what they look like in the real word, world in, in comparison to what we see out there normally. But thank you. Uh, do you have any questions from council for, uh, Sean?
You know, I'm curious. Well, first of all, um, you know, thank you for reducing the size. I think, um, this is a more appropriate size and, and, and I, I don't think just for our town, but I think, you know, probably, you know, for many cities, um, you know, that unless there's like super, you know, congestion and maybe you need, you know, a bigger sign. But, um, are other cities also going to smaller sizes or is this a request from Brisbane that was, was granted?
This is mostly a request from Brisbane. The signs in other cities are typically along more highly developed arterials.
Got it, got it. Okay, no, that makes sense. And then, you know, I'm just kind of curious, you know, um, like there are these driving apps out there like Waze, for example, and people are, are, you know, putting in information, you know, in real time, what's going on. How does something like Waze, you know, get incorporated into something like this or, or does it?
It depends on the speed with which it occurs, but if it is, if there is time for Waze to integrate it, it should pick it up off of Caltrons. Generally, if it happens immediately, there may be a time lapse, but Waze should show detours and other, and other routes that may be directed by these signs.
Okay, so, so you, you, you're incorporating the, the private sector along with what you're doing here. Got it. Okay.
Well, they, they are linked in for road closures and things of that nature.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. All right. Thank you very much.
Madison, do you have any questions?
I don't, but thanks for calling.
And, and remind me, how many signs are there going to be placed in Brisbane?
Six.
Six. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing a hand from Michelle Salmon, please.
Where are these six signs going to go? Are they all along Old Bay Shore? Are they, uh, you know, at the marina? Are they, where are they? I mean, that seems like a lot. And also I, I find that sometimes these signs on the road can cause really a lot of distraction for drivers. I'm hoping that, are these like flashing signs, illuminated signs? I was at the thing in September, but that was many months ago and I'm glad the signs are smaller. But five by seven is, I mean, five by four is still like this tall by like this wide. That's pretty big. So I just have questions about that. It's, it's a kind of a concern that I'm worried that it'll impact, you know, distracted driving.
They're changeable message signs.
They're what?
They are changeable message signs. So they provide words on there that people read. They're located at the major intersections and at the freeway on and off ramps. And they're intended to be lit, as I said earlier, only when there's a major traffic incident. So they're not intended to distract drivers. They're intended to direct drivers who are not familiar with our roads to get them off properly, to get them to their next intersection.
My, my concern is that then they will be legible, but they won't have so many words on them that you can't read them without stopping. That's a problem I see now with our electronic sign boards coming into Brisbane. People stop to read the sign board as they drive by or try to, uh, decipher cryptic messages. It happens on the Bay, Bay Bridge now too a lot where people are trying to decipher what the message means. So I'm, I'm curious about like what the capacity is for that and how large the letters will be and will actually be legible. And did we make a mistake by making them too small? Are they on all the time or are they off when they're not needed? That's questions. And, and it will only be used for emergency situations and not just buckle up, you know, because people stop to read that too. Just worried about it.
It's my understanding from reading the staff's report, staff report, that Caltrain will only ask to use them when there's an emergency. It will be the city's public works or further direction on when to use them in other instances. So whether we decide we want to put smiley faces or slow down signs or something like that would be up to us and at our discretion. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is cor- correct. I believe it's the third time it's been stated this evening. Yes.
It would be my personal hope that we don't turn them on for trivial reasons. But that's just because I don't like signs. I hate flashing. Um, there's one stop sign that I come to a lot that actually can trigger migraines for me because it flashes so bright and is very distracting. But you know, you have to stop. So I guess there's give and take with everything. Any other discussion?
Just a clarification to Randy. Randy, so just for clarity here, for the majority of the time, those signs would be off?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? You're looking very pensive, Colleen.
No, actually, uh, councilmember Cunningham said exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. And Madison, any discussion?
No, I'm good with the recommend, I'm good with moving forward. I think we discussed this at length the last time we had it on agenda and I don't see anything that's wavered from what we had asked for and agreed upon initially.
So I will say that I reached out to staff, um, when they talked about the fiscal impact. And I got some clarification and some reassurances that this project would not go over budget without, um, going through some major hoops and agreements with CCAG and their funding sources and ourselves and the funding sources. I also asked about the staff time and how much that would cost us. And again, was reassured that the engineering time would be mostly our public works director and, um, one field staff who's already on, on our payroll. So we wouldn't be incurring additional costs that should be substantial to the. that should be substantial to the city. I think that was really important to me and I'm glad that staff could answer those questions for me and give me the reassurance that, you know, the project hasn't gone, the projects that have gone on before through this, for this program in other communities have not undergone cost overruns that have breached their caps, spending caps after they started construction. There was one project that did come in over budget, but it was before they started construction and they were able to address that with the city and with CCGA before it proceeded and got anybody where they're on the hook for a certain amount of funds. So that's good that CCGA has a good track record with this. We hope that they keep that track record for us and don't end up having funds that the city's not anticipating to spend happen because of this project. So with that, I'll ask if anyone would like to make a motion to approve?
I will approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. And thank you, Sean, and your team for coming out and explaining to us and working with us on this program. Okay. That brings us to item I, receive short term rental ordinance implementation update. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We've reported back several times since the short term rental ordinance was adopted a couple of years ago. Last time we were here was last November, when the Granicus contract to renew the monitoring and permitting services was renewed. And there were some questions the council raised at that point in time. And so we have done a little bit more work on that. We just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the overall program. One, in terms of the number of permits, no additional permits have been filed since we last spoke. There are four active permits, total of five have been issued when expired without being renewed, so we have four active permits in town. Monitoring enforcement, as we discussed previously, Granicus is actively performing that service. Again, the number of potential short term rentals varies month to month. It generally runs in the six to eight range and again, there's been no particular change in activity since we last spoke in November. TOT collection or transit occupancy tax collection, that was an issue for the council when we talked about last time. Please to report that all the permits are now up to date through the end of 2023 with the payment of their TOT and related penalties and lay fees. So everyone is, all four permits are now current in terms of their payments to the city. In terms of other procedures, you know, at the council's direction, we have tightened up some of our procedures to, for implementation and monitoring, to make sure we're on top of the payment of fees, auditing the fees that are being collected, also to make sure that the permitting records and the notification that permit holders get from Granicus do provide more detail as to the consequences of not making payments. So the applicants, the permit holders are getting more information pushed out to them as to their obligations as well as the financial penalties if they fail to comply. So those are outlined in the report as well. The one new issue that we didn't talk about much was in a research we've done, when the permit system was first, or the ordinance was first adopted, Airbnb and other sort of services were not routinely collecting TOT and transmitting it to local agencies. There has been a change, especially with Airbnb, where they have agreements with a number of cities now to collect the TOT and transmit it directly to the city. So if that's the council's interest, we would be glad to look into whether the city of Brisbane could obtain such a similar agreement with Airbnb and other platforms as well as available. So that's the one new sort of consideration. We'd like your input on that. With that, that would conclude staff's comments.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Karen?
John, so when you were doing the research into the automated payment collections, did you find out how difficult it was for those cities to make this happen? I think it would take a huge burden off us and not be a huge burden to Airbnb, VRBO, whoever else, to just write a little line of code and slip it in there and make it happen. So do we know how long this process or what's involved, please?
We don't at the moment, but obviously if the council's direction is for us to explore it, we would be very willing to do that. And you're right, it would take a lot of the guesswork out of this kind of monitoring and, you know, determining if someone is paying their appropriate tax based on nights rented. But we wanted to hold off until we had the council's presented this and had the council's direction to proceed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
You know, I got a similar question. So, you know, on page three, the third paragraph, so if the city were to enter into an agreement, generally such companies would offer hosts the ability to authorize the company to collect taxes on their behalf and to remit such taxes to the relevant tax authority. So is that mandatory? If we set this up, would the hosts have to do it or could they, you know, do a different option like what we're currently doing?
We'd have to, again, in our negotiation or discussions with them, we'd have to flesh out what those parameters are. I don't know the answer to that at the moment.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you.
Colleen?
We have currently four permit holders are all active as of fourth quarter 2023.
All are, I don't know, I don't know if anybody had any listings in the fourth quarter. Everyone's current with their payments though for the year.
I'm just trying to get an idea, since we pay out a large sum of money annually to Granicus in some ways, whether what we are collecting is offsetting the fees we are paying to enable short term rentals to do business.
I think over the life of the program, and Jeremiah probably has all the details, it's been approximately 30 some odd thousand we've expended and we've collected about 28,000. So it's close to a minor cost deficit, but kind of a push.
Okay, thank you.
Madison, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about 161 to Laurie. And it's page 37 or page four of this particular staff report. So it says this permit holder has not reported or remitted tax to the city since permit issuance on March 16th, 2023.
Just for clarification, that was written in December. And since then, they have made their payment. They are, they are currently, they are presently current in their payments to the city. So that data is out of date. That only happened this week, so.
The payment came in this week?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So, I mean, working with, so should we then restrict if you have an Airbnb, if you have a short term rental in Brisbane? Maybe we say like a condition of your permit is that you can only list it on Airbnb and VRBO because those are the companies, or Airbnb if that's the company that we're going to partner with to collect TOT because, I mean, this has been an issue. We only have four permit holders and this has already been an issue. So if, you know, clearly the method that we've been using hasn't yielded the best results and so we need to take it up a notch and have something that is automatically charged and remitted to us. But I see that the only way of really ensuring that we're getting the correct TOT on time and accurately is by, you know, making sure that our short term rental hosts are listing on sites in which we can get that.
So.
I know that's a little bit of a statement, but really just kind of follows up on, I mean, I guess in, to make that a question from staff, if somebody is using something outside of those platforms and they are not remitting TOT, how are we going to go about collecting those funds on a more timely, in a more timely manner? Because I think last time we discussed that the penalty was just like you didn't get your permit renewed, but somebody could go a whole year and we're still waiting on that money. So I think that this is like, I don't know that this really fixes that problem unless we restrict people to certain platforms.
Yeah, I would probably, I mean, when we go through the exercise in determining what kind of agreements we can achieve with what platforms, I think we'd want to talk to the city attorney about our ability to limit other platforms. I don't, again, have an answer to that at this moment. If they were still using other platforms, we'd have, be in the same position where we do have the ability to audit and request documentation for stays for those other platforms if we did not have an agreement. I mean, we do have processes in place to verify that data now. But, you know, I think it's a good point and we can look into that when, when we come back with agreements and the council can provide the direction you see fit and we can consult with the city attorney about that as well.
So just as a note, we are not making a decision tonight. We are just discussing this, making sure we have enough information when we go forward and we give direction to staff. With that, I'd like to ask for, do you have another question of staff?
I do.
Okay.
John, so obviously the big ones, Airbnb, VRBO. But we did list two different smaller cities that had enacted that. Can we, as part of that process of determining what goes on, can we contact those cities and ask them their platform usage?
Yeah, that would be what we would do, yes.
If we don't cover all of our bases, the bases will get hidden.
So I'm ready to go to public comments if there's any public comments to be had. If there are many members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no hands in the audience, do we have anyone online?
No matter, mayor, no hands raised.
Okay, great. So we'll close the public hearing and then on a discussion and just as an aside on this, from my point of view, I went on to Airbnb and I looked and one of our hosts is pretty much booked 22 to 26 days a month, pretty continuously. And so when I see in Granius's documented stays that in a particular time period, and granted, this is probably old data, but I've been sort of tracking this on my own all along, and they say estimate, estimated revenue, 2,000 to 9,000. I don't understand how they could be so vague if we have a contract with them to follow up on this, when they don't know if the income would be 2,000 to 9,000. And wouldn't that give the opportunity of the person who has the obligation for transit occupancy tax to say, oh, yeah, yeah, I only made 2,000? When you can see on the website that they're booked a lot of the time. And then there's other sites in Brisbane where they're saying their rent is $500 a night and Granius has, and they've got bookings because they're blocked out the dates that you're available. And yet, it seems that we should be able to get better data than what we're getting and be able to enforce better, but I'm not sure how. I'm looking for suggestions on how we do this. And that's just one website. I didn't go to the five or 10 different websites that are out there that you can book homestays on besides the big two. So I don't know what the, what the solution is here or how to give you direction. I think that, you know, when I've booked an Airbnb or a VRBO stay, when I'm traveling, most of them are, right there, it says local tax on how much you're paying. And some of the listings here in Brisbane are charging local tax, but not, or they say it in their listing, I haven't booked any, but they say they're charging local tax. And I don't know if they are or not, and I'm not sure that these are even the houses that are, you know, have actual permits. So I think we run into a conundrum either way that we look at how to enforce. And I'm happy to field any questions or discussion because this is what this is, is just discussion to see how we might be able to do better. And I think if we were able to set up a program with the big two to collect tax on it, at least we'd be getting stuff that is on label. But that doesn't mean that when someone comes for a stay and they book through Airbnb or VRBO, that they don't say, well, can I extend it another week? And they'll just pay you cash. And that happens also.
Yeah. Colleen, it looks like you were ready to jump on in there.
I see having the listing agencies collect the TOT as a vast improvement over what we're doing. It takes a lot of the onus off of staff to monitor. It removes the necessity to rely on whatever reports are submitted to us by permit holders because Airbnb and VRBO obviously know what transactions are going on. If someone is staying beyond and paying cash, I don't know that there's much way that we can actually monitor that unless it's neighbors just seeing that somebody's been there a long time, but I just, I think that that's the nature of the beast. It's just going to be there. But I believe the suggestion to have the collection of TOT is almost like a no brainer. I think it's a great idea. And I would personally really recommend we go ahead and have staff look into that. And I understand the legal question, can we prohibit someone from listing on Craigslist or some other, who else? I'm trying to think, there's other listing sites I've seen. There's at least about five major ones. But if we could in fact stipulate that if you are a permit holder in Brisbane, the TOT must be collected, so you must list on either or, whatever site, or one site.
That may or may not be legal, but that's something for greater minds than ours. That may or may not be legal, but that's something for greater minds than ours.
Or else we need, I think, a better way to, we need we need a better way to hold people accountable than just saying, oh, we may not renew your permit in a whole year. But I know that's not entirely what we're discussing. I support us exploring. Um, you know, partnering with listing sites to collect TOT and then, you know, we can discuss further once we know, once staff has reached out. We can discuss further what is legal and what measures we need to take to ensure that if somebody is listing elsewhere, how our policy works on collecting TOT in a more timely manner. And, you know, maybe you miss a payment, your, your um permit expires right then, or maybe you're charged interest. I don't know what it is, but I think that's something we could explore in the future.
Yeah, I'm very much inclined to explore uh these uh, you know, these ways of, of getting the money. It just makes sense. So, and hopefully, you know, just looking at Airbnb and VRBO, you know, you're gonna cast a pretty wide net, maybe add a few of these other ones.
I, I just did a search and came up with six, just like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't really use the service that, that much, but I mean, I, I'm just kind of curious, may, maybe, I know Sarah you use, use it, right?
Oh, I do. I, when I use it, I, I, I actually use it quite a bit.
So, you know, does, do people list their places in a variety of venues, like, so they'll have it at Airbnb and, okay, so, and then?
They're even on hotels.com now.
Even hotels, okay.
That you can, you can find an Airbnb type listing on hotels.com. And it'll say, you know, and, and, and most of them. Um, Airbnb specializes in having a little bit more flexibility about the owner being there or not. Um, VRBO, it's, you've got the whole house and you're not going to be bothered by anybody. It doesn't mean you couldn't go party the night away, but it does mean that it's not a hosted situation. And Airbnb started on the premise of a hosted situation. You know, at some place, instead of flopping on the neighbor's couch, you
Yes.
flopped at somebody else's house. Um, so, you know, I think that when you're, when you're shopping for a vacation rental, um, you, you look at different sites depending on what your needs are and what you expect in privacy and comfort. And, and the whole reason to go through a site is to make sure that it's legit because um where I was staying in Mexico this last year, there was um several people. We don't run through Airbnb. We do a private through the owner of the property. But people who listed on Airbnb hook you and then say, well, just send me the money off-site. I won't go through Airbnb. I won't charge all these extra fees because it doubles the price of what your home stay would be with the fees and the service charges and everything else. Um, and then there, the people just pocket the money and it really didn't exist. So there's a reason for people to go through uh VRBO or Airbnb because if that happens and you arrive and knock on the door and the people say, oh, you this isn't where you get to stay, you've got some recourse. So, you know, it really depends on how, if you want to take a chance and go off-market and, and not go through the system.
All right. Well, it sounds like, so we collect about twenty-eight thousand, we spend thirty thousand. This seems like an, an add-on to at least break even. You know, maybe we make a couple of extra bucks. Um.
But we're also providing safety to the people that are using this. It's not really that we're here to make money from it. But we are here to make sure that the homes are safe, the people are safe, and everything's legit and above board. And I think that's where we started with.
I, I think there's one other element here is, yes, we are concerned about safety because an, an unpermitted property could have fire, health, safety issues. But it's also, we have permits because we don't want rampant short-term rentals removing housing from Brisbane, when all we're hearing about is housing. And I do have one other question I would appreciate if we move forward on this. When checking with Airbnb or VRBO, do we tell them who the permit holders are? Or, as Councilmember Cunningham just pointed out, could they collect TOT re- required on those listings, anyone listing in Brisbane, whether they have a permit or not?
They would probably have to. They wouldn't be going by our permit. They'd be going by the zip code.
Yes, exactly. So we would, in fact, then, could we then receive a report from them, obviously showing TOT, but who they collected it from? We could find out who the nun permitted.
We could, right? Then we could use that information to give it to Granicus to go out and give them the notice.
Yes.
Hey, we've collected money for your short-term rental. Why don't you have a permit?
Right.
Here's the proof, right? No, that, that sounds good. It's better.
So we're just directing staff. We don't need to make a motion, right?
No, we're not. We're just giving direction. We're not making any decisions.
So, I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement.
Yeah, I think we, does staff have enough information to move forward on this?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, before we move on to the next item, which is item J, I'd like to take a five-minute break if we may.
We're ready, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, thank you and welcome back to the City Council meeting. And we will go forward and move on to item J, which is consider potential sale of a city parcel, APN oh-five, oh-oh-five, three-hundred-nine-nine-nine, formerly the Southern Pacific Railroad um site, and consider approval of resolution declaring the city parcel is surplus land. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll, I'll start off and I have the uh Public Works Director, City Engineer, and City Attorney's Office there available to answer questions that you may have with regards to this item. Um, this item is on your agenda tonight, um to pass a resolution declaring a city parcel as a surplus land and to consider a potential sale of a city, that said, city parcel.
Can I ask you to be a little closer to your mic? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. We've gotten a little crowded up here, so, uh, if we can go ahead and put the picture of the uh here we go. So on the screen, there is the picture of the uh, the site in the question here. Um, this is property located in Crocker Park and is part of a former rail spur that was owned by S- uh, Southern Pacific Railroad. Uh, the railroad sold the property to McKesson Corporation. And in nineteen sixty-five, McKesson transferred the property and numerous other properties uh in the area to the city of Brisbane. Recently, BLT Enterprises, which owns the property there at one fifty-one uh West Hill, um, which is immediately adjacent to the parcel, uh made an inquiry to city staff about purchasing the parcel. Um, in discussions with the city council, um, three major issues came up with regards to um reviewing this uh potential. Um, one was the, any fut- future best uses for the parcel, um, E.G., uh, our example would be the use of a property for access to San Bruno Mountain. A second was uh the presence of existing city storm drain facilities on the parcel. And the third would be what development would be allowed on the parcel if it was sold. Um, as you can see.
You've been muted this entire time. Like, I can't hear, I couldn't hear a word you said until just now.
I'm not muted in the room, so.
So, but I don't know if, if recording? Like, I don't, I don't know if it's just Zoom parties, attendees and participants couldn't hear you? Or if that relates to the um, any kind of streaming later where what you said needs to be repeated, but uh you.
Well, we're, we're checking it out, Madison. We'll, we'll, okay.
I could not hear either. I actually thought that you two were talking among yourselves, given the camera. But I didn't hear the last, very last few.
Can, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, clearly, yeah.
Okay. It doesn't matter. Okay, let's start from the, let's take it over and start, start it from the top.
Thank you.
Okay, this item is a request to the city council uh to consider a, a resolution to declare a city parcel as surplus land. Um, and you see on the uh screen, um, a picture of the property that is in question here. Um, this property is located in Crocker Park and is part of a former rail spur that was owned by Southern Pacific Railroad. Uh, the railroad sold the property to McKesson Corporation and in nineteen ninety-five, McKesson Corporation transferred this property and numerous other properties in the area to the city of Brisbane. Recently, BLT Enterprises, which is in yellow, yellow there on the screen, um, owns, which owns the property at one fifty-one West Hill, um, which is immediately adjacent to the parcel that we're considering tonight, made an inquiry to city staff about purchasing this parcel. In reviewing this, city council had three items that they um were of, had interest in terms of any decision on this. Uh, the first was the, an examination of the future best interests or best uses of the parcel. Um, for example, uh, the use of the property for access to San Bruno Mountain. Uh, the second was the presence of existing city storm drain facilities on the parcel. And the third was what level of development would be permitted on the parcel were it to be sold. Um, as you can see, this it area is um, this parcel dead ends at two oh-one uh South Hill and currently does not provide any uh potential for future access to the mountain. Um, and it will, the letter of intent from the potential purchaser uh indicates that they will provide an easement on the property for the purpose of providing public access. The second issue, having to deal with the city storm drains, city storm drain facilities, um, they uh would be resolved by requiring the purchaser to grant the city an easement for its storm drain facilities on the property and at the owner's agreement to maintain the storm drain facilities, including provisions for the city to inspect the owner's compliance with the agreed-upon um duty to maintain the V-ditch. Uh, finally, the uh property owner was um approached about uh having a um covenant on the property that would allow it not to be built uh on, only to be used as a parking lot. Um, so the part, he has indicated, the property owner has indicated an interest in such. Uh, so a covenant would be recorded to restrict the use of the property uh and would allow for parking and for access to the building on the adjacent part, property, which is now is the host through uh Frito-Lay facility. Given these uh commitments from BLT Enterprises, which commitments uh would be embodied in a written purchase agreement, uh if the council wishes to proceed with the potential sale of the property, set forth the, or the next steps, which uh with the understanding explained in the book below, um, that this council is agreeing to proceed with the sale does not necessarily mean that the sale would happen to uh BLT Enterprises. So then step that we have on the agenda tonight is to uh declare this property um as a surplus land. Uh, the parcel under discussion is not near a transit station. Uh, its forty-four-foot width is encumbered by Its 44-foot width is encumbered by a 15-foot V ditch easement that makes it likely unsuitable for any housing, both its small size and its inaccessibility due to being surrounded on all four sides of lands by, of others makes it likely unsuitable for recreation or school district purposes. Notwithstanding all that, the city is required to make a finding at a regular public meeting that the land is not necessary for a city use. The resolution is on your agenda tonight. If there is no interest of any public agency or affordable housing developers once we put it out for, as a surplus land at a property or at a price that the City Council deems fair, the city then may enter into negotiations to determine the mutually satisfactory sale price and conditions with a third party such as BLT Enterprises. As is indicated in the letter of intent, they have offered $718,250 at this time for the purchase of this property. If the purchase agreement, if this council wishes to move forward and there is not an interest on any of the parties to purchase the property other than BLT, then the purchase agreement before, will go before the Planning Commission, which must find the sale is consistent with the city's general plan. Any decision of this Planning Commission, as you know, can be appealed to the City Council. The City Council has discretion over how these funds are used and can direct them into whatever account or accounts it deems appropriate. In discussions, the council has indicated that it will want to restrict the use of these funds to open space acquisition and open space habitat management. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from council for staff?
Unmute, please.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so looking at this map, the blue area is the land that we own.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, but not all of the blue area is going to be sold, correct?
No, it, no, sir, it's not correct. It is all going to be sold and then easements will be given back to the city.
Okay, okay, got it. So that incorporates the, whatever this, the square footage that calculates that dollar amount.
Exactly correct.
Okay, so then, just looking at this map, the portion of the blue side that is, I guess, to the left of the property line that's in yellow, that will go back to the city to be part of the open space that the public can access via an easement along that property line? So just trying to get some clarification here because it's not clear on this map.
You know, let me, if I look at the clerk, clerk, can I, can we move an arrow around on that? I may just have to wander down to your position. Let me see if I can do that. Let me, let me run down to the clerk's position.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
No running in the hallways.
Got it, got it. But we're gonna sell the, all of the blue space.
Here. Stop.
And then they're gonna, now it's all moving around. Get me all thrown off here, Karen. And then they're gonna give us an easement here on their property.
Can you draw with a highlighter on that?
Geez, that would be quite the trick.
I believe I have to do the big Fig Newton pose first. No, I don't, I don't think I can the way it's presented.
Never mind. It helps that you're pointing to it.
The pointer, yeah, of course.
You're really testing me now.
The new access for the public would be along the western boundary from the cul-de-sac along, and then they would be able to turn to the right
Correct.
to get up to the traditional trails that were there.
Correct, absolutely correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Karen.
While you're there, Randy, just for further clarification, so the public can understand. So the blue parcel is 44 by 100, is that right?
I don't have the exact number in my head, ma'am. It's probably a little longer than that, ma'am.
Okay, so it's 44 wide.
Yep.
We're going to have a five-foot easement on the right-hand side if you're looking north. And in the middle of that 40, hang on, on the western side of the 44 is where the V ditch is, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Right, so what would be left to do anything with for anyone else would be 44 minus 15 minus the five-foot easement on the north side.
The way I would describe it, there is gonna be 29 feet here.
Okay, thank you.
Because that'll be adjacent and contiguous with their existing parking lot. I don't, I don't think practically they could use that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions for staff? Madison, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't.
Okay. Let's go ahead with public comments, and I do have one slip from Michelle Salmon on this item.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I am very opposed to selling this land. It is not surplus. It belongs to the people of Brisbane. It was given to us by McKesson Company as a gift. And it is not surplus, and it's not something we're gonna build housing on, but it acts as a safety zone, a buffer zone between the development and the mountain. And I was out there today. Last year, we had a fire of heavy-duty gorse up behind Hensley, and that area was used to bring in a fire truck. Fortunately, there was access through there. And it's not just access five-foot, access for hikers. But I think extending the parking lot even more all the way to the V ditch, which I don't consider a V ditch, I consider it the contained Guadalupe watershed. I think that's wrong, and I am really opposed to this. This is our buffer zone. Now the buffer zone gets pushed even further from traffic to the mountain. And these buffer zones are really critical for the safety of the mountain and the safety of the people. If the fire department had not had such fast and easy access when that fire broke out behind Hensley in the gorse, very heavy gorse that covers that area, it could have been a tragic, a tragedy, a tragedy for Hensley. And I really feel that this is an important area that leads up to Devil's Arroyo. It leads up to, I can't even think of the name of it, I'm so upset. It leads up to the other watershed area going up to the park. It also leads up, you know, the whole area along there is sensitive habitat. Yes, it's where the old ranch house used to be in some areas there, but this is a fire hazard. This is safety. This isn't just, oh, we love the mountain. This is really a safety issue to keep pushing and pushing the boundary there. And this land was gifted to the people of Brisbane, not as surplus land to be sold. And I know you guys made it look really good. We're gonna get this little, you know, access. I know you guys are working hard to make that seem right. But the reality is, is you're selling public land along a watershed creek that comes down off the mountain. The, the property sell to Shanghai didn't work out very well. How are you gonna enforce the covenants and restrictions that you're putting on this property? We haven't done a very good job of enforcing the CCNRs up at the northeast ridge. We haven't done a good job of enforcing the agreements that were made with Shanghai. How do we expect us to continue to make these agreements and then not be able to enforce them or just not care as the future goes forward? This is public land, and, and I'm sorry, I really don't want to be here having to say this again. I thought we addressed this a few years ago when this came up with Frito-Lay, but obviously not. And we can't, this is a slippery slope, selling public land, and we can't just keep on selling public land. This is different than housing authority land where we were forced to sell it because it wasn't suitable for housing. This is different. This is Brisbane's public land. And what are we gonna do with the money? Oh, we're gonna sell it, we're gonna use it for habitat maintenance and open space. Well, that was what was sort of promised when we sold the Shanghai Bakery property. And instead, we used it all on consultants and to, you know, pave a trail around Crocker Park that's already breaking down. So I just kind of really, really, we're, we're supposed to be this most environmentally conscious town, and yet we keep selling it out. And this is just another example, and I know to many people it just looks like a little strip of dirt, you know? But to me, no. I mean, Cliff, you and I have walked this before when this came up a couple of years ago, you know? And it's an important access to the mountain, but it's also an important access for fire safety. It's an important access to bring, be able to bring in masticating equipment to take out dangerous brush like broom and gorse. You won't be able to do that anymore if you move forward with this plan. You won't be able to bring in the equipment that you need, that the county needs to clear that land behind Hensley all the way around to where Wax Myrtle Ravine comes down. You won't have access to that anymore. You're cutting it off by doing this. And yes, you've made accommodations for the one and two and three and four hikers that might want to go up there, but you're not looking at the big picture of our care of the wildlands of San Bruno Mountain, which include removing the invasive gorse. The county already has a program up on the saddle area where they are bringing in masticating equipment to take out gorse. It's about the only way you can get rid of it, short of burning it, which we won't hopefully be doing on purpose. And hopefully, it won't happen by accident, but the way things are going, it could very well. And so I'm urging you to just say no. No, this is not surplus land. No, it's not for housing. It's open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing and go into discussion. Anybody want to start us off?
I actually have a question for Randy. The comments about not being able to get firefighting equipment in there or masticating equipment, whatever is needed to protect the buildings that are around there, could you explain how that would work, please, Randy?
Well, I'm not familiar with what masticating equipment would be because I haven't ever seen it employed out there. The last time that there was a fire out there at Hensley, it was right off the edge of the Hensley property is where the engine came in. Actually, Cal Firebird Dozer in and knocked down one of the trees and just slipped around the building. So I don't see that there's gonna be development in that area that would impede that. And even worst case, if there was, you could just drive around the backside of 150 West Hill on the piece that's off the screen. Oh, I'm sorry, that screen's not up anymore. But instead of going, as you're looking down West Hill Place, there's the left side of 150, even if for some reason that was blocked, even though as I understand the development, they don't have any plans to extend it that far beyond, you know, their yellow boundary. You could go around the other side of the building.
Thank you.
Gollin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just say I cannot vote in favor of this. I have two very strong opinions. I've watched a similar parcel which was sold to a private landowner, and in my opinion, the expectations of how that would be maintained have not been followed through adequately, continues to be a problem. But my greater concern is every single time we move the urban wild interface closer to the wild, to me, it's a no-brainer, you know? You're increasing the chance of a wildfire, and I, I don't see that as being worth a sum of money that later we could very much regret. And what you're talking about is, nothing against the property owner, but you're either putting people or vehicles closer and, use your imagination, sparks from exhaust, cigarettes, trash. We are in extreme wildfire danger, and, and I just can't do this. I'm sorry.
All right. So, yeah, you know, a few years ago, I don't know how many years ago, maybe it was like five, four or five years ago, right? You know, this was before us. And, you know, at the time, you know, I was on the fence about whether or not moving forward or not. I went out with Michelle, members of Mountain Watch, evaluated the site. At the time, the amount that was being offered, I think, was about 187,000. I don't know, is that somewhat correct?
You're in the ballpark.
Okay. Right, so, you know, that didn't really provide enough funds, I feel, to significantly offset selling the property. But the amount that is being offered now is significantly more. And I look at that, I look at those funds, you know, with the ability to do something better for the environment than what that piece of land currently represents. No, so what I look at is, you know, how do you take those funds and potentially purchase better open space? How do you use those funds to revitalize the habitat along Crocker Park Trail? When we see the work that was done by Paul Buschall in the Frog Habitat, you go, okay, you know what, that, that's pretty amazing, right? And could we continue to do something like that on other parts of the Crocker Park Trail? You know, I, I look at that, that area, it is overgrown with invasives. Could we use some of that money to do habitat restoration within that vicinity? You know, those are possibilities that we as a council could decide if we had access to those funds. You know, back then, the Crocker Park Trail is, you know, people used it, no question about that. But so many more people use it today because we've, we've laid that, that crushed granite surface. And so now that more people are using it, there could be the possibility of providing other amenities for people who use the trail. You know, I, one of the things that, that I did like about the previous offer that still exists today is having the legal access to those trails. That, that's, that's important to me. Maybe it's not so important to others, but, you know, having legal access to those trails is important. You know, Karen, you, you asked the question about the fire access, and, I mean, when I look at the map, I just, to me, that there is access for the fire trucks and the firefighters to access that area in between Hensley and this property. And then I don't think that'll ever go away. So to me, you know, access to fighting fire is there. You know, one of the requirements that we asked, that, you know, it was kind of like, hey, you know, we might entertain this, but you have to make sure, you have to ensure to us that that property is only gonna be used for parking vehicles, right? You can't build any other structure next to the habitat, right? And so to me, that, that kind of neutralizes that, that, that area. And so to me, that, that kind of neutralizes that, 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 that area. So that there, you don't have that same type of intrusion between the public and the, the wild space. So based upon, you know, these, these things that I just mentioned, I would be in favor of moving forward with the sale of the property. I understand the issue about the surplus land, and that's just a process that we would have to go through as a city in order to, to be able to sell it. We have to offer it to, to other entities. So, um, that's, that's how I, that's my take on it.
Okay, so I have been out there and looked at this piece of property now, excuse me, many times. And I think part of the discussions that we have had has been that this particular little tiny strip of land does not have very much value at all. And we could use funds to purchase other property that has high value. And so I see that V ditch or irrigation channel, whatever you want to call it, as being the buffer. And if a spark could jump from a car across a fifteen-foot drainage ditch, we got a whole different set of problems going on, because that would have to be deliberate. So I would like to see us move forward, and I would like to ensure that if we go through this process, that that money is absolutely dedicated to purchasing other property of high value with high-value endangered plants, species, whatever. That's how I've thought about it for quite a while.
Madison, would you like to weigh in on this?
Actually, I would love to hear from Lucas, since we have the pleasure of your presence tonight. Can you explain to me why, or I think it's for, also for the public's sake, why you're interested in this property and what, how, how you're planning to commit to ensure that you're a good steward of this land?
Yeah, for sure. Um, good evening, everybody. So the, the intended use here is solely to extend the parking field. Um, in terms of maintaining, we have no problem maintaining the, the V ditch. We want to grant that easement for the hiking path so that you guys actually have access to our existing asset or existing free-to-lay facility and go down the side of the, that strip of land as well. So there's that grant as well as, again, the maintenance of the existing drainage ditch, which is arguably not maintained today very well. So we're willing to take that on. Um, but again, it's really just for additional parking and circulation for the existing building. We have no interest in constructing anything. Or again, again, anything other than parking.
What are the protocols that you will put in place to ensure that trash or cigarettes or anything like that is dealt with immediately?
Yeah, we will make sure to, um, have a conversation with our tenant free-to-lay, um, that, you know, that is, that is looked after, um, weekly. And to make sure that they ensure that their trucks are parked in a, a good fashion, that there is no trash in that drainage canal, as we know that it flows downstream, and that's obviously a, a huge issue. So we will make sure that the management on-site is aware of that and kind of in a timely manner, uh, working on that.
Does any other members of the council have any questions for Lucas before I speak?
No.
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 Thanks, Lucas. Um, I share some of the same sentiments as Karen and Cliff. I think that having an easement allows us to have better access. And I think it'd allow us to get equipment back there legally, uh, right when we need it. So I just disagree with the comments that have been made about, you know, not being able to get back there in the case of an emergency. I think this legitimizes our access, and I think that it is a smart move for us to have access legitimized, not just for the public, but for the city as well. I've also been out to the property myself. It doesn't strike me as something that is, again, of high value. I understand, you know, wanting to have a buffer. But I don't think that you can punish someone for the sins of another. So, you know, if we're concerned with the way that Shane Key is maintaining their property, that's a conversation we need to have with Shane Key. I think we've made it pretty clear to BLT Enterprises what our expectation is of them. I think that the way that we have constructed the deal points in this are, you know, really to ensure that safety is of utmost concern. That's why there are gonna be no structures there. I do think, you know, having it all paved and, and no random brush reduces, uh, you know, fire in that, fire possibilities in that area. And I would like to see us be able to have, you know, dedicated money to purchase properties that are of extremely high value. And I know that there have been, you know, properties that even Mountain Watch has suggested that we purchase, that are, you know, critical butterfly habitat, and there's just not money for that. So I think that, you know, BLT is, is willing to compensate for, with a number that I, I feel is fair. And, um, so I, I'm in support of moving forward.
Thank you. Colleen, do you have comments?
I would just say with the mention of expectations placed upon a property owner and acquisition of, um, this strip of land, the same expectations were placed upon a similar property. And I, I can't say whether the blame is on the city for not enforcing or on the property owner for intermittent compliance, but I, I don't see that improving. And, um, I don't believe a V ditch is a fire break. Look at wildfires in California with sparks, and we see they travel through the air. So a fifteen-foot V ditch is not going to stop the spread of sparks onto the mountain. I, I still have grave concern over wildfire. I, I don't believe that this is a worthy trade-off. Thank you.
So does the council have the will to reopen the public hearing to give Michelle two more minutes?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing and allow Michelle to speak.
One of the things that you don't realize is that that doubles a royal, leads up to where the rare manzanitas are that only live on San Bruno Mountain. Several of them were already destroyed, um, this past year where, because of the PG knee work on the power lines, uh, on the gas line. And Mountain Watch has been integral in, um, trying to replant the, you know, taking, taking cuttings and growing them and replanting them. A wildfire in that area would destroy those forever. And believe me, they move fast. I think back to the, to, uh, January twenty, uh, June twenty-second, two thousand and eight, and how fast Owl Canyon went up in an inferno. And then Buckeye Canyon went up in an inferno from the backfire trying to stop that fire. And that is forever indelible in my mind. And you may think that one property has higher habitat value than another. But one of the things that's so remarkable about San Bruno Mountain is that it is a full functioning habitat ecosystem, still intact. And you can't pick and choose this little piece here and that little piece there and that little piece there. Our job is to protect all of it as a whole. And I would not be here speaking to you about this if I thought this was not, based on all of my experience as a biologist and as a person who grew up on this mountain and everything I've learned, if I did not think that this is another lynchpin property that needs to be protected. All it takes is one cigarette butt and it goes up. And before you even know it, it's out of control. We were really, really lucky that day when, when that gorse caught on fire behind Hensley. And that happened really fast. And our fire department was Johnny on the spot and got it under control really quickly. But that, that could have gone the other way, just as easily as Owl Canyon and Buckeye Canyon went the other way. And just as easily as the Wax Myrtle Canyon almost took out, um, the Northeast Ridge Development. And so I ask you to really seriously reconsider this. Money comes and money goes. And yeah, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is a lot more than a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. But at the end of the day, how much is the mountain worth, you know? How, and, and it's not tit for tat. Let's, let's do this or let's do that. It's not a, I don't think it should be about the money. Uh, money's important, it's true. But we have a lot of money issues facing this city. I remember when our budget for this city was thirty-five thousand dollars and we accepted that gross polluter, Van Waters and Rogers, because that's the only tax base we had when we started this city. We now have a budget of well over twenty-eight million. And we're looking at a whole lot of development coming up. But why do you have to sell this one parcel? I feel that this parcel is important. I, and I, and I think more people would be here if they knew. But all negotiations, all discussions up till now has been behind closed doors. Closed doors. This is the first agenda that it's even appeared in. And if I hadn't been paying attention, I might have missed this. And so I don't feel like the public has gotten a chance to speak about what they want, about how important this is as a property, not just as access, but as a safety buffer and everything else. So I understand the goodwill that you're trying to do with what your, and what your thought process is and everything, but I disagree with it. I think this is not a good idea. I think it's wrong. And I don't think we should sell this property. I think we should continue to have it as public property and negotiate acts, legal access, uh, with an easement with Hensley. I think it's in their best interest, safety-wise, to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing again. And as hard as some of these decisions are to make, I think that if I were to say yes to, um, making this surplus land, it would be of the caveat that the money's not used for amenities. It, it can't be used for amenities. I, I, I think we have a responsibility to do amenities and park and rec in a different way. But I do think these funds could be really instrumental in buying several acres of critical habitat up on the mountain or in other places that really are critical to saving the entirety of San Bruno Mountain. The public will be informed as it goes forward. It's gonna go before the Planning Commission. It's gonna do a lot of things before a property's actually sold. And I do think that having legal access for hikers or Mountain Watch or anyone else to get into that property, which they don't have right now. Yes, on the weekends, people can tromp across somebody else's private property and get there. But that's because Hensley hasn't put fences around their property. They very well could. And there would be no access for hikers or people wanting to go up those trails. And just because we're crossing an invisible fence line, we're still crossing an invisible fence line when we cross to go up those trails. There's no legal way to access that. But again, I would certainly, if we go forward with, we would want a lot of restrictions on how the money is spent and where the money goes. I do think with the V ditch that runs through there, um, when it's running with water, it is a barrier for, um, an intermittent spark. And Colleen, as you were saying, that, you know, in wildfire season, sparks can fly for miles on winds. And that extra twenty-eight feet where it's forty-four feet we're selling, but the V ditch takes up the western portion, that in, in Inferno is not gonna stop from that happening. But again, I know that it's, it's something that I think we can really do more with what we can get from this than what we have with it right now.
So, you know, Terry, you know, you, you know, you talk about having the, the really tight restrictions on how we use that, those funds. And I think that's something that we all agree on.
I think so too.
And you're right about like amenities, those should be park and rec, and there's other funding sources for that. You know, Karen, you talked about, you know, just, just for the purchase of land. And it seems like you're for just the purchase of land. You know, what if some of those funds were used for habitat restoration along the Crocker Trail or in the area that we're talking about here, like perhaps removing some of that gorse? You know, uh, you know, planting natives in that area with those funds? Is that in the same spirit of, you know, a, a proper use of that money?
You know, can I, can I ask that? So I thought about that, um, you know, could we do habitat restoration? But I don't think that's the right use for this kind of money. We don't often have a situation where we could direct the sale of this little strip of land to purchase something that we have identified very high-value targets in Brisbane. And you brought it up at a meeting. I've thought about it a lot. I think Madison's talked about it. That, you know, we have identified a whole bunch of high-priority lands. And if they become available, it would be really nice to have the money to say, yep, we can snap that up. And, and that, that kind of opportunity doesn't come along very often. And yes, we have a lot of other bills to pay and things aren't great. This, this would be, for me, that's why I would want to restrict it to purchasing high-value targets. But that's, that's just me. I'm one vote.
And that would be me also. And, and if I were to move forward with an actual sale, that would be required, that it wouldn't be up to the, the body of a future council or for anyone else to, it, it would be to repurchase public land.
To repurchase public land.
To repurchase property for the public, not to think about it or plan it or enhance it or anything else, but to purchase replacement property that would be so much bigger and so much more valuable than what this property is. And that's the only reason I would think about it. Of course.
Tom, can we, if this moves forward and it goes through the whole process with the Planning Commission and it comes back to us, um, for a sale agreement, can we be that restrictive about the funds right now or with this council? So as Terry just said, you know, if none of us are on the council in the future, that agreement is still in place and whatever we agree to must be adhered to?
Um, so there's an A and a B. The A is can't think of any reason why you couldn't put the restrictions on or make them as tight as possible. Michael may know of something I'm missing, but I don't think there's anything in the act that does that, um, Surplus Land Act. However, no matter how strict they are, a future council can undo what you've done. So, you know, in my experience, when, when councils feel very strongly and they make that very clear through their resolution, recitals and things like that, it's hard to undo it. People respect that, but they can undo it.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, of course.
I, I would just ask my colleagues to consider a rhetorical question, which is you are also sending a message that any small parcels of land the city's not using are for sale. And you're making a determination for the future that somebody with the right price, anything's for sale here. Because you're gonna take that money and, and rationalizing, well, we're gonna buy something better. But you're also sending a clear message that anything's available for a price. So I just want you to think about that. So I just want you to think about that.
I disagree with that, Colleen.
I do too.
I totally disagree with that because each property in Brisbane is its own entity. And I would not apply my thought process on this piece of property to anything else that we look at. Each piece is individual and deserves its own individual attention. So I'm not a lemming and I'm not saying just because I'm willing to sell this piece of property that I would be willing to set, sell the next piece of property. Because I would look at it as a clean slate and I'm not a lemming and I don't have a fixed mindset.
I, I understand that, but we were not selling this property. It was sitting there, could have been sold anytime. Why are we now considering selling it? If it was money and it was buying other habitat or, or, or other premium parcels, why weren't we doing that anyway?
So I, I'm
Really?
Yeah, I'm in favor of your recommendation of using the funds strictly for the purchase of, of public land for the city.
You know, it's it's something that has been a really difficult decision. But I do think and you mentioned a couple parcels that have, would, may have an opportunity. And the only reason we are looking at this piece of property, it's landlocked. There is really only one purchaser that we can think of that would even be interested in it. And they did approach us. Um, because it will benefit their property by having that extra access and easement. And it will benefit us by having, getting a legal pedestrian access and V ditch access. Cause right now we don't have legal access. Of course, we can ask and people will grant it probably, so we can access the V ditch to clean it. Um, but we can't even access to get to the gorse on the other side. Because we don't have any legal access except through the state park and that's a long way down um, from any trails. So I do think that this is in the, in our benefit and I don't think because one property asked us to sell an adjoining parcel that we had. Um, that says that all of Brisbane's for sale and that we're selling out. I, I certainly don't feel that way. And I certainly would want it for critical habitat replacement. Where we can do a lot more good than, than we can with that one parcel. And unfortunately, it is a trade-off, but it's not a sellout. I would never sell out to anything in Brisbane. So, I mean, with that, I'll take a motion to declare this property surplus.
Madison.
Is she wait raising her hand?
I was just nodding.
See, I don't see your face. I don't know how he's seeing your face.
No, I just took a guess cause we, cause Karen said that Madison's been quiet for a while, so she really hasn't been part of the discussion, so just.
So would anyone like to make a motion that this is surplus property and proceed with the process that will go through the public hearings to work up to where we would be willing to sell it?
Madam Mayor, I think, I think the motion would be to approve the resolution.
Okay. To approve and there's no resolution number. I guess I have to go back to my script.
Put the resolution number in later, right? Yeah. There, there won't be a number, but just you can refer to it as.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the resolution declaring this parcel surplus?
Certainly.
I'll second.
Okay. Did I say that well enough?
You were fine. I've just never heard it first as certainly, but that's okay. It's all good.
Pardon me, through the mayor, I was just, I was just wondering if uh, legal counsel Roush wants to take a look at, I, I believe it's recommendation number one on the staff report and I just wanna make sure he's satisfied that, that we've given all the authority that needs to be in there.
You're just requesting the sale of that APN, right?
Well, there's an entire paragraph in there and I, I wonder if he would like to comment on whether all of that needs to be said or not.
Well, I think it would help clarify, uh, because the way the resolution is written, it provides that not only is the uh, the property declared surplus, but it also authorizes the city manager to take any action necessary to effectuate a sale. Now, if the council wants the actual purchase agreement to come back before it, then uh, then that resolution probably ought to be amended to not include that authority such that uh, after the surplus land act procedures are conducted and assuming that there's no interest in the property from anyone other than BLT Enterprises, if the council wants to see that purchase agreement and approve it before it goes on to the planning commission with respect to the necessity of finding the conformity with the general plan, the council ought to indicate that because otherwise that won't happen with the resolution drafted as it is.
So how much of this page, two-page resolution would you like me to read into the record?
No, I don't, I don't think you need to read uh, any of it into the record. I think what the staff would like is clarification from council whether it wishes to see the purchase agreement and it's what I would call its final form before it's executed by the city manager or whether the council's willing to give that authority to the city manager tonight, after which it's not going to see the purchase agreement, uh, it's not gonna see it again.
Okay. So we would like to approve the resolution to declare this property surplus pop, property and give uh, authority to the city manager or his delegate to proceed with the negotiations on behalf of the city per our recommendations?
Yes.
Does that do it?
Again, just so it's clarif, to clarify, with the goal that you, that the council wants to see the purchase agreement before it's actually executed by the city manager. That's the distinction I'm trying to draw because the resolution is drafted would not have that happen.
Okay. So I'll restate this. We will approve the resolution declaring the property surplus property and request that before a prior sale goes through that this comes back to the city council for approval.
That, that works if that's the motion.
Right. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. And then a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
No.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
So I'm waning fast here. Um, so, and it's already ten twenty-seven. It'd be great to just try to like blow through the rest of this as fast as possible.
Okay. Um, I'll extend, can I get a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes to ten forty-five?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. Okay, staff report. City managers report on upcoming activities.
No report.
Thank you. Um, mayor council members, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. And consider endorsing a letter to the California Insurance Commissioner. Um, and I believe we were provided a draft from Councilmember Cunningham that has been reviewed by the city.
I have comments about the letter, just some typos.
Okay.
It was my draft. I wasn't expecting it to become a public document.
It's okay. Um, I, I just think like number one, I don't know that that all needs to be capitalized.
Probably not.
Although I know that that's like how it was printed, like on.
That is how it was printed on the document. I just copied it from the document as it was printed because it was meant to make a statement to the person whose insurance was canceled.
Okay, well, there is an extra space between this and insurer, just so you know.
Got it? Yes.
Also, um, there is a sentence that says um, at last evening's C CAG meeting where all mayors or vice mayors were present from every city in San Mateo County, it just says period. So it should be like a comma, I think.
Yeah.
I asked after the Bay Area Housing Financial Authority presentation, how insurance was going to play into our future growth. So I think just a period there, I mean, a, a comma there. And then, um, I think it should say um, on behalf of council members from the city of Brisbane.
Yep.
On behalf of city of Brisbane, city council members, just a little wordy.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering if Tom had any edits because I did send this to him and um, we just wanna make sure that we're not looking too aggressive to the insurance commissioner who is working really hard on this right now. But um, I really wanted to make this point.
Yes, madam, uh, sorry, I called you. Yes, Councilmember Cunningham, sorry. Um, I did revise it and I realized actually about an hour ago that it's sitting in my minimized spot. So I will, uh, I'll share the revisions. It's consistent with what Councilmember Davis was just talking about. But it does keep the, it has the attachments and it keeps the record um, very clear.
With that, um, I'm, I know we could talk about this until we're blue in the face. We got, you know, excellent information from Kevin Fryer. We've had residents reach out to us about this. It's a pervasive issue. I think we all agree, we could talk about it forever. But in terms of next steps, I'm in support of sending a letter. And I think that, um, you know, this is this is a, a good letter. It's short, it's to the point. Um, so are you gonna be attaching, cause it says item number three, you're gonna be attaching the document that Kevin submitted?
Yes. I, if that's, if that's appropriate, because that um, letter from Kevin came in after I had submitted this letter to the city. But he did a lot of good work on it, or I should say the board at Ultima did a lot of good work on it. And yes, it should be attached and it's really shocking. And I think everybody should see what's actually happening to the people in our town.
Yeah, I would just put attached there, just amend the.
Tom, you had a, you have your hand raised?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Cunningham. So we're attaching, I know we have the email trail.
Yes.
And then Kevin's letter as well?
Yes, um, that came in after I submitted this letter and Kevin and I had been having um, several conversations. And I suggested to him that it would be better if his board wrote their own letter relative to their circumstances and that we could include that. So he has done that, but as I said, it came in after I'd submitted my draft letter.
So just
Okay.
Just, just as a thought, it seems that them submitting their own letter would be one thing. I don't think that I, I haven't
Don't want to attach it? That's okay.
I haven't seen Kevin's letter. Um, but it, it seems that that might not be appropriate.
Okay. If you, if you wanna separate it, that's fine. They've done a lot of work and it just kinda points out their circumstances in detail.
I mean, I personally, it was emailed to the full council, but there is like a interim, there's like an intro letter from Kevin, but the document really is the document that the board prepared for Ultima. So it, it demonstrates like all of the people that they contacted, all of the rejections that they received, what the reason for that was, all of the different policies that they had to um, secure in order to meet the coverage that they needed. So it's not really like coming from Kevin. It, it's coming from, it's a general document from their board.
Would it be, sorry, would it be appropriate for you to look at it tomorrow and?
Tom has his hand raised.
Uh, as to appropriateness, that, that's really up to the council. Um, I did have a chance to review it. I'm happy, it, I'm very, I'm friends with two people there including the commissioner. I'm happy to personally give him uh, the letter from, that Kevin provided so that he knows it got there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think it's great to send a letter, uh, you know, on our behalf. I mean, you know, this is about seventeen, eighteen percent of our population that is going through, you know, this, this ordeal. I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge impact to their financial situation.
I've heard two more Cliff in the last two days.
Yeah, right. And so, um, you know, I, I, I'm glad, Tom, that, that you've made some edits and perhaps, you know, Clay, I mean, I'd, like, when you send out a letter that's from all of us, you know, you just wanna make sure that all the facts are, are tight and that, you know, that's what, that's that we're gonna present to this commissioner. Um, you know, the insurance commissioner is, is totally buttoned up. And so, um, and, you know, I think it you, you know, I think it's probably stronger as a letter. Um, you know, if, if it's say the mayor or if, if all five of us are on this um, letter.
That was my intent, was, you know, from the mayor and the city council. So as I said, this was my draft. I didn't expect it to be a public document.
I'm happy for it to be in, in the interest of time. I'm gonna try to push this along. I'm happy to put my name to it as, as far as for the whole city council. Um, I just condominiums are in a very different situation than private homeowners. Everyone's being hit with this uh, insurance dilemma. But condominiums have a, of, a forced limit of where they have to be on coverage. So they are really over a barrel. Um, and it would be, I think that advocating for condominiums in general and our particular condominiums is great. But I think that we can't be their advocate in whole. And are we going to send a letter for every person in town who's lost their fire insurance? You know, with our letterhead? So I only have concerns that we look like we're trying to be the enforcing or the advocacy agency. Um, that we're not really gonna be able to provide because it comes down to state law, especially with the condominiums.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to suggest one other edit to the letter. If the letter goes forward, that it should read Commissioner Lara, cause his first name's Ricardo?
No, 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 that, that, that has been addressed.
Okay.
This was not supposed to go public.
Okay. And, and secondly, in, in terms of getting word to the commissioner's office, there, I've mentioned before, there was a webinar that was sponsored by League of California Cities on December sixteenth. It was all about the insurance commissioner dealing with policy renewals. And I could read you my copious notes, but in the interest of time, I wouldn't do that to you anyway. And some of this information may now be dated. But one of the final parts of the webinar was for your local communities, staff are available to hold town halls in your city. So I called the commissioner's office. And I'm going to get an answer either tomorrow, Tuesday or Wednesday about whether they can send someone in person to Brisbane or at the very least do a Zoom meeting. We could hold a workshop. The commissioner's office then would hear an earful and also be able to answer questions.
That'd be great.
Tony Barrios has al, also offered to do that, but I think it's, it would be a more ideal to get somebody directly from.
The, the difference, Madison, is that, that the webinar was a staff person and they addressed what the commissioner's office is doing and took some specific questions and their, their answers were really quite interesting and impressive and informative.
Yeah, I think it's better to get it from the source if they're offering that service. Then that would, that's even better, I think.
Okay, so we have public comment listed on this, on, on this particular item. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the insurance letter?
I do think your point is well taken, Madam Mayor, that um, if the council's gonna stand up about the insurance, that it should be for all of Brisbane because I've heard that my insurance carrier will be canceling me. I haven't heard directly from them yet, but um, yeah, Kemper's leaving Brisbane too. And it goes back to our fire safety and fire hazards and, and what's happening in California. And I also have oral communications.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak online?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Great, we'll call close public comment and would you like a does staff have enough direction to follow through with this letter and and get the signatures as needed?
Yeah, we'll we'll draft the letter and get it out to you for all of your signatures.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Karen, for initiating.
Are there any subcommittee or county assignment reports?
JPA library. We were talking about our strategic plan for the next few years and that is early in the works. And as my letter states, we had a CCAG meeting last week. And interestingly enough, in the middle of all of this with Bay Area Housing Finance Association making a presentation to try and convince us to follow their lead and have the people of Brisbane support higher taxes for affordable housing. I did ask the question at that time, affordable housing for whom? And how do we build affordable housing if we have no insurance? So.
Okay. I did have a airport roundtable meeting and I guess we discussed unmanned aircraft and coming to a city near you. Air taxis, package delivery, all sorts of fun things. There will be a lot more information coming and right now it was very thousand foot level. And then the other thing that came out of it was I was elected to be the vice chair on the promise that I would not, my personal promise that I would not become the chair. So I am now the vice chair.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're very pleased.
Yeah. Anyway, that brings us to oral communications, number two.
Wait, we have more subcommittee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Madison, you and I. Council history subcommittee.
On our list, on our list.
Oh.
Report out on it next time.
Okay, fine.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, written correspondence was received from Kevin Frye, Barbara Ebel and the Organization of Chinese Americans, San Mateo County.
Thank you.
The prior council, before you were on the council, Madam Mayor, made decisions about the Northeast Ridge and there was a lot of conditions and terms and compromises made over that. And I just would like to point out that maybe I don't have very much faith in the process that went on tonight about the surplus property because here we are more than a dozen years later and Clippy Hill and the McKesson properties are still not deeded to the county parks as public land. So that's been a long time, a really long time. And in the meanwhile, that property has deteriorated and we're finally getting to work a little bit on Clippy Hill, but we have to go through like a drainage ditch and a barbed wire fence or not barbed wire, wire fence to get there. And so I I don't have a lot of faith in our ability to be able to follow through on the promises and the things that you want when you make these kind of deals. And and I hope you do better than the last council on the deal that you're about to make with surplus land. I mean, it's interesting that we go from talking about the fire hazards of having somebody flick a cigarette into, you know, from the parking lot and burning up the mountain to the problem that we can't get fire insurance in California or in Brisbane, or especially the Northeast Ridge, because they've already been threatened by a wildfire. And so the irony of it is, I hope is not lost on you about that. I did drive up there today to the site and I as I drove by Shanghai, what most of the people in the parking lot were doing were smoking and eating and people outside of Hensley were smoking right there next to the habitat. So it's not so far fetched that this is definitely a concern. Thank you.
Actually, Colleen just brought up our, oh, I don't know, you asked for another oral communication, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Did you want to? Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Madison.
I don't know if we can go backward. That's maybe a Tom question, but Colleen wanted a report out on history subcommittee and it'll probably be on for next meeting, but I actually think I'm missing next meeting, so I don't want to leave her to do that report by herself. So can I can we do it really quick, even though we moved on?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. So Colleen and I have been working diligently on, you know, moving forward with the history room and getting exhibits going and really bringing forth the identity of that space bringing that to fruition. Colleen and I thought what better way to, you know, know what's best for that space than to actually visit? Went for a visit. There were people using the room. It's set up like a conference room. It looks just like the conference room at City Hall. Just has art on the wall and big conference table and a TV. People were having a private meeting in there. And so then I waited outside the room and then Caroline popped in and so the people realized that maybe we needed the room, so they graciously gave it to us. And then right when they left, another group tried to get in the room. And I mentioned that we are from the city and that we needed the room and they started questioning me about whether I had reserved it or not. So needless to say, we we had a little exchange and then Colleen and I were in the room for about 10 to 15 minutes before the librarian knocked on the door and asked us how long we were going to be because other people wanted to use the room. And I would tell you, they're not using it for history. They're using it for meetings. Which, you know, first and foremost, that room is really intended to be an exhibit space focused on Brisbane history. So Colleen and I thought that the best way to really ensure that the room is used to it its purpose would be to take out the conference table and rearrange the existing display cases. They look like console tables, put them in the middle of the room. And then we may need to purchase a few other extra display cases because the ones that are there are very, very small. You can only display like one open book. So we came up with a like a layout of the room that would really focus on the history and the pieces itself in the collection. There was a request from Councilmember Cunningham to make the room available on occasion for people who wanted to book telehealth appointments or appointments of a sensitive nature like that. We discussed putting a desk in there for one person who they could have telehealth appointments. We also discussed putting a bookcase in there, which would have the history books as well as books from Brisbane authors. We would, we suggested signage that would go on the doors and inside on the walls, indicating that this is the Brisbane History Room. So we are working on bringing the room, making the room history focused while also allowing some space in there for people to use it for telehealth if needed.
Great report. Do you want to add to that?
I I would just add that that I did have a conversation with Clark Conway about how how the room, the genesis of it and the planning. And he was just very emphatic that they wanted people to enjoy it in terms of being able to see the history archives. We have archives at City Hall and there's some wonderful things and a lot of potential themes and exhibits going forward. And it's a little distressing to go in the library to want to see the history room. And people are just shutting the doors and saying, you can't come in here because that's not the intent of the space. And while we're very sympathetic to what the county is trying to do and the library system with telehealth and we're working with the library to on a pilot to see how we can try to structure that, we have to be mindful of the fact that that room would not even exist were it not for the fact that the city said if we're going to build a library, we want a space for the artifacts and to do exhibits of our history. So it is a Brisbane History Room, not a history room with history books, but Brisbane history books. And so granted, a lot of library patrons, it 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 hasn't been set up. There's been delays in the pandemic, but we're trying to move that forward. So people from outside Brisbane or inside Brisbane can go in and enjoy seeing the history of Brisbane. But the doors need to be kept open and and that's that's something why we're we're trying to move this forward as a dedicated Brisbane history space. Thank you.
Great. Any other reports? Okay, well, with that, the meeting is adjourned at 10:48 PM. And thank you all.
All right, thanks.